Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the 19th meeting over. The next meeting has been advertised according to New Jersey Day Sunshine Law. Everyone please rise and salute to the flag. Obie. Thank you, Obie. Can I have a rule for the minutes of our cover second meeting? Have a motion for Mayor Gelli, can I have a second? Second from Mr. Ingber. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Yeah.
Mr. Riviet.
Yes.
Mr. Ingber.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Yes.
Mr. Halberson, how about attendance?
What attendance? Everyone's here?
No.
Okay. Roco, okay.
Mr. Gelli.
Here.
Mr. Halberson.
I thought you was out of place, I didn't know what it was.
Mr. Langry. Mr. Naftali.
Yes.
Mr. Riviet.
Here.
Mr. Ingber.
Here.
Mr. Gross. Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Halberson.
I'm here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Madam Secretary, thanks for the roll call.
Could we do the sunshine act?
Yes, you could.
You did?
Yes.
Yes, I had a correspondence. Appeal number 4044. They'd like to carry the application to the next meeting, which is December... I think it's the 2nd, somebody check.
December 2nd?
December 4th.
Okay, and why are you carrying it?
Dear Mr. Chairman, I would like to present the applicant. Brian, you've called me earlier today, you've gotten some calls from some neighbors. They have some issues, they want to try and talk and see if we can resolve it. This is the first time we're being listed for...to be heard. Just ask if you have some time to work it out with the neighbors.
Okay, I have no issue with that. Anyone have an issue with that? Seeing none. Can I have a motion table for December 4th?
Motion.
Motion for Mayor Gelli.
Second.
Second. From Judy Riviet. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Yes.
Mr. Naftali.
Yes.
Mr. Riviet.
Yes.
Mr. Ingber.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Yes, okay. Can I have anyone that's here for appeal number 4044, 650 East, 7th Street LLC? That'll be heard on Monday, 12/4. Thank you. Madam Secretary, any other correspondence?
No.
No. Oh, that would be no, yes. Yes, and the waiver of time, correct, thank you. No further correspondence?
No.
Okay, I see Mr. Brian Flannery at the podium.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, appeal number 4028, Bernard Gorman.
4028.
We'd like to withdraw the application. If he comes back and we notice...
You want to withdraw it?
Withdraw.
Totally withdraw it?
Totally withdraw.
Okay, I understand.
We'll have to resubmit and we notice...
Lot all over again. Fine. Can I have a motion to withdraw appeal number 4028? Bernard Gorman, if anyone has any objection, please let me know now. Motion for Mayor Gelli, can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Judy Riviet. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Yes.
Mr. Naftali.
Yes.
Mr. Riviet.
Yes.
Mr. Ingber.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Yes, okay. Can I have any luck? Anything else, Madam Secretary, that we need to know before we start?
I have to put in the resolution, but we can do that.
We'll do that later, that's fine. Okay, so we're gonna go to old business. First off, on old business is Connie Halperk, who would you like to speak to?
Lot 101, Lot 1, R10 Zone, to construct a single-family dwelling with both variances. Revised plans were submitted from Terry Vote and De Nier Planner, October 25, 2017. At the May 1st, 2017 board hearing, the applicant was given direction by several board members to reduce the size of the proposed building. The revised plan...the revised variance plaque shows that the proposed building footprint was reduced from 3,019 square feet to 2,927.74 square feet. The building reduction results in a four-foot increase in aggregate side yard setback. The second story has a net floor area of 2,093 square feet. Parking has neither been increased nor decreased. Additionally, a new vinyl fence and a row of arborvitae are depicted as proposed buffer along the western property line.
Flannery, are you going to testify?
Yeah.
Do you swear to tell or confess your firm? Swear to tell the whole truth until we got...
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer and professional planner. The applicant...application indicated it for a...an existing lot. And the applicant wants to build a resident...not that, an existing residential building and replace it with a new, larger building. As indicated, the applicant was here in May, at that time. They were given the direction, I have it's not involved in the case at that time, but they indicated they were given the direction, come back with at least nine-foot side yard setbacks. The application this evening, I know the board has changed since May, the board likes to perceive 10-10. We'd like to have our application be for side yard setbacks of 10 feet and 10 feet consistent with what the board likes to see. This would eliminate one of the variances that were requested, three variances were requested for side yard setback. We were asking for nine feet, eight point something where 10 feet is required. We're now not gonna ask for that variance. We're asking for a combined side yard setback of 20 feet and a building coverage of 32 percent.
How much is the building coverage?
Thirty-two percent is what we'd like to ask.
Instead of 32.9?
Yes.
Instead of 33.9?
Well, originally, it was 33 and changed, dropped down to 32 and changed. We'd like to ask for 32 of this.
It requires 30, yeah.
Requires 30, yes. I have four exhibits here this evening. A1 is a tax map of the area, the subject property is colored in orange. The properties and the two blocks surrounding that are not compliant with the R10 Zone are shown in blue. I have A2 is a rendering which was submitted of the house. But I'd like to point out is that the whole height does not extend at all the way. It's got a part of it, isn't full two-story. So the complaint last time was it was too much house. This makes it not too much house. Even though we have the request that we have for building coverage, we put a floor area ratio which is more in keeping with too much house. Floor area ratio that's permitted by the R10 is .6. Floor area ratio that we're showing is .55. So it's less than what they put had complying with the 30 percent. A3 is just a map that's submitted, it shows this line side yard setback of 18, we wouldn't use feet ago, so it would be virtually the same thing. Would be four parking space in front, but we come back to 20-foot side setback. And I thought it was...in order for the board to see the property immediately to the east where there's a duplex. And I highlighted, I should probably flip it over so it will be oriented the same way as A1. But right next to it, there's a duplex that's constructed on the lot at 30 percent building coverage, 10 feet from the property line. So this building would be consistent complying with the rear yard setback. I know there was a...an objector at the last hearing from the manager that was...to the rear of the property. The furthest back we would made is 20 feet, which is the required setback. The applicant is willing to move the house and the parking around, come with a better solution. We feel that what's submitted here is a good solution and fits in well with the neighborhood, but the applicant is an end user, wants to move into this neighborhood, wants to be friends and with, you know, have a friendly neighborhood, and willing to work. If there's something that the public or the board wants to do and they can still have this house that accommodates the needs of their family.
Mr. Flannery, I think...
I think... I think Judy wants to say something before?
Yeah, the question posed to you and I guess to Jerry, in past we've had a situation of applications that have shifted and changed upon application, and the policy has been remastered, they don't want to change anything, especially if you don't know what it's gonna look like, even though to my opinion, you can do that and find a place, you make a decision based on what you think.
Well, I think, Mr. Riviet, I understand what you're saying, and normally you're correct, but I think this, though, is a change which lessens any non-conformity. It'd be one thing if it was asking, Kenny, it's not asking for more install the plan. This one...
Yes, and with all due respect, this is an applicant that knows that the board's philosophy has changed since May. And nobody said in May we're gonna approve it, but in May, they got the impression nine foot side was okay. They submitted an application. When I saw the application, I said, "Board's changed since May, they like 10 foot side." So they're not trying to shut something down, or something, they don't also want to be a need of a half to withdraw a plan, or something that's very simple, it's one foot left.
And I understand that, but, you know, again, you know, Jerry, we feel this is fine, just from my...what I'm looking at, if the house is shrinking, we don't know what's shrinking, we're gonna be, all we know is that this is...
Yep, I didn't hear the end of it, you did not know what?
All we know is that the house is gonna be more narrow. We don't know anything else about this. We don't know, you know, how that's gonna make out, and, you know, what they're doing, they're asking us to vote on something, and we have no idea what it is. Even though it is smaller, in concept, what they're saying is, would you agree to something that's potentially on the size? The question is, if we're closing the board, is, would you consider a house that's only requesting, that's having 20 feet instead of 25 feet? That's really the only question that we get answered at this point. There's nothing else that we can see.
Well, Riviet, can I check for a second? Brian, how much smaller the total, I'll make them ask, how many feet is it? Two feet, five feet, four feet?
Two feet.
The whole thing is two feet?
Two feet. And to tell you how this lays out on the...
Help, I...
So nine, one, seven, so it'll be ten. It's a few inches to the tunnel on this side.
So one sec, one sec. So nine, one, seven, you're making it three quarters of an inch smaller on this side?
Right.
Okay, and then when we're picking up the other foot, not the foot, the ass on the other side?
In A3, we're gonna take one foot and then it's for that.
And then, let me ask you another couple of questions then. Is anything changing on the...on the layout of this wall? Any windows coming to the room? Is the door gonna be put in this position? Is the basement stairs staying exactly the way it was coming to be?
Yes, it's all gonna look virtually the same. From the outside, you're not gonna know it, and probably inside, you're not gonna know it either. If the room gets a foot smaller, you know, unless you had furniture, and we've had those cases in the past where the furniture doesn't fit, I don't think we have this situation here. But it's a...it's a change that, as I can say, red and mark on the plan, two foot different. It all looks the same.
Flannery, the question that the engineers reported, is there a basement that is somewhere that is access, how is their access located?
But there is a basement, and we show side...
I can't see that one, I'm sorry.
That's the plan that was submitted. A3 is the plan that was submitted, and it shows the staircase on the top. Typical for Lakewood.
Well, how would...could you describe, what is A3 again, 'cause I didn't...
A3 is a plan that was submitted. It is a plan prepared by Uline Residential Variance Plan, dated 9/2017.
There's no...there would be no exterior stairway to be at.
That is correct.
Okay. Back to Judy's position, 'cause I don't wanna go off focus on that, on that issue. Jerry, what do you...do you really feel that this is...I mean, this is a real custom home. This is not a development where we redesigned the whole entire development and making the roads, or making the house inside look totally different for sale as a private end user. Do we...do we really have to, on a custom home like this, see how they got inside to the east? It's only two feet, I don't know. I hear we're due to say, I myself have rejected a number of applications and they started to move things around, right?
Let me...okay. If you think you have enough information based upon testimony of Mr. Flannery, knowing that something has to change and only approved by the engineer, that's fine. Now, normally speaking, my recollection is that we don't like changes that all of a sudden increase a variance. This is decreasing variance. So that's my recollection of usually how we handle this, but if you have enough information, so be it, if you don't, you don't.
The worst that can happen is one of the veterans who's upset is not gonna fit, they have to remove one of the veterans on the second floor.
The mother-in-law can sit.
What? Okay, I mean, are you okay with that, Judy?
I'm okay with it, but, you know, my recollection always is that what happens is, when somebody comes here and we start beating them up because they're not accepting what they're putting out front, it's okay, well, we'll shrink it down a little bit, and of course, it's more conforming. So the time when we ask somebody to come back is always when they wanna shrink something and make it more conforming, not the other way around. That's my recollection.
Well, it's your fault, you have an individual decision for you, remember the zoning board, if you think you need more information, or if you want to come back.
I mean, it's a real...it's a real custom home, it's not a kind of development where they're redesigning and selling for a public, which we don't almost know on a basis, basically.
Yeah.
Maybe I can give you a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
They can submit the revised plans with the residential zoning law.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to hear, you put these on.
Okay.
Let's go ahead. We'll pick this up then later. Okay, go ahead.
So we're here looking for both variances, for the two items, which you might, Kenny, we're not gonna know who the chairman is.
What'd you say?
We're not gonna know who the chairman is.
Then you got a problem.
Oh, yeah.
Either amnesioelectxia or...
Mr. Chairman, I've been here too long. That's the problem, I've been here too long.
I don't know what it is.
So, the two variances that we need relief for are 32 percent instead of 30 percent, which in my opinion, it's the minimum relief, when you look at a custom house being built, when you look at a house that isn't doing the entire second story, when you look at a floor area ratio, it's less than what you could get with the...on your 30 percent. And we're looking for 20 feet instead of 25. When you look at A4, the duplex that's next door, that was on an undersized lot that this board granted, and I could read you the...from that resolution where you indicated that it benefits out with the detriment, and it provides housing opportunities, you had compelling testimony at the time, I plan on giving the same compelling testimony, but the findings at that point were that this works in this neighborhood. And the reason it worked, if you look at those two blocks, there's 30 lots in those two blocks, 20 of them are undersized lots. So this is, it's a neighborhood that's R10 in name, but a lot of the lots haven't fit on something just undersized. And we're talking about such a small difference, it's 10 foot on each side, each neighbor is getting what they would have under the ordinance. If we made it smaller, we have to make it deeper, and it really wouldn't accomplish anything, it would more approach, you'd have some of the reefer. So, looking at the report, it indicates, in item one, we're here because we're in the R10 zone, we don't have 10,000 square feet, that's an existing condition, it's developed on all sides, there's no way to get any more land. We have the side yard setback that we asked for, that the applicant has decided to not ask for that. The aggregate side yard setback, so we're asking for 20 rather than 25, and the curb is covered, we're asking for 32, where the ordinance allows 30. If we look at the new 2017 master plan...
I don't see a deck.
Is there a deck, what's in the right-hand corner?
Any deck would have to fit.
Well, no, if there is a deck, I might think I'll go to the top deck, though.
I don't...well, this plan doesn't show a deck, there is an area on each side where a small deck could be put, or a patio there.
But they know it's 20 feet from the deck.
Yes, yes, the...no development, you brought us that kind of a rear setback, and you can have it here and there.
Is this deck we've opened at the whole time? Did you plan to bring out the deck?
No. We won't come back later that we needed a deck to the second, and therefore we started out on the A4, and therefore it's in a setback. And the resolution that we spoke about it in the minute, you spoke about it?
It certainly could be a finding effect that was discussed, and the applicant is fully aware that decks need to comply with the setback. So the master plan 2017, which was just adopted, also indicates, it's got on, in the background information section, a topic on population growth and it goes with...
Right, I mean, anyone looked at that, adopted the set, resolution of the 2017 smart growth plan or master plan, whatever you mean there.
I didn't understand your comment.
You're quoting 2017 master plan?
Yeah.
And I'm saying, I don't think anyone on this board had a chance to read it yet.
Well, I did, I'm explaining to the board what it said.
You did, how about you wrote it?
That was A.D. Penn's, if he wrote things, not me.
Okay, you know?
But if it has...
Just before you went to the chairman's seat, for the committee's seat, did I write it?
Or you did?
There's only a recommendation, it's not written something.
Where is it?
What's a recommendation?
The master plan. It says include me on the website, and it says on the...
What page are you on?
I'm on page two, background information. Now, what was posted on the website was something from September that didn't get adopted.
Chairman, 27?
Yeah, but it was adopted, and they don't have formal documents to give out, but it was adopted...
What was adopted, what was adopted?
The master plan was adopted.
By the planning board?
By the planning board. The planning board adopts master plans.
Right, it has to be by the...
No, the master plan is adopted by the planning board, the township can either adopt ordinances to implement it or disregard it.
Correct.
The master plan doesn't say this area should be changed, but the master plan does say that in Lakewood, we need housing opportunities. And that's what's said in the background.
Really?
It was in 1999, go ahead.
Yeah, well, because it's been true since 1999, and it's gonna be true when I'm not here, Lakewood is going to need housing opportunities, and one of the things the board is supposed to look at when you're granting a variance is how it fits with the master plan. And this fits well with the master plan, because the master plan says we need housing opportunities. The conclusion is, in 2015, it was a total of 4,464 births to Lakeville residents, based on the information, it's therefore important to Lakewood's plan for residential development and housing and population.
I think you should put a duplex on in that, based on what you just said.
Well, a duplex would provide more housing opportunities, but it wouldn't fit in well with the neighborhood, and the end users are here. This isn't a developer, the developer might want to visit the duplex here. The end users are here, they wanna live here. So then the revision statement, which is on page seven, indicates encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth plan principles for the balance of land uses, and it's my testimony that this complies with that.
Okay.
In order to grant the both variances, it's a secret variance, I have to show you that the benefits out with the detriment, that there's the impact on...so the municipal land use law, NJSA 4455d2, under the purpose of the act is to encourage this collection to guide appropriate use and development of all land in the state, in a manner which will promote public health, safety, and also general health care. It's my testimony that does this. Under P, it says to promote the establishment of appropriate population density and...that will contribute to well-being in neighborhoods, communities, regions, and preservation of the environment. When we look at the population density, what's permitted under A in R10 is one, a duplex on 12,000 square feet. The density that we're creating here with a single family and 800 square feet is consistent with that, and if you look at A1, it's certainly consistent with here. So for seats and variance, we have to show that it relates to a specific piece of property. This is an existing 800 square foot lot existing in this area. We have to show that the purposes of the municipal land is small to be advanced, and that's what my testimony was. We have to show that the variance can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good, and certainly we're providing 10 feet on each side, we're providing rear and the front of our setbacks, we're providing the parking, there is no significant impact on the public good. We have to show the variance will not carry intent purposes of the own plan and zoning ordinance, and that's why I read to you the master plan, where it does indicate that the housing is required. And we have to show that the benefits out with the detriment, and the benefits are massive goals of the master plan, providing housing opportunity for a young couple that wants to live there and raise a family there, and to me, the detriment or not significant. Looking through the rest of the report, it was provide testimony on the architecture, I think the board has any questions on it, I think this plan shows that they're planning to build a nice house, obviously they'll agree to all of the normal board standards on irrigation and architecture.
So first of all, just to start, whoever thought a little bit ahead of the game, did a smart thing, I think ahead of the game, that he put it in 10-10, as opposed to eight and a half, and nine and a quarter. Because to me, that would work for the last time, you couldn't make houses smaller, just by dropping it down by a half foot, that'll make the house smaller. So whoever's had, I recommend you, whoever thought about it in advance, of connecting to 10-10. So having said that, I don't have a problem with asking 10-10, I know that a number of places we have developed, or let's build 10-10, based exactly what you said. This is a custom home, these are rear yard setbacks, I did not understand the front yard parking, which I want to here, clear up for you, and how you plan on doing the front yard parking? And I, for one, I see on the proposal, you want to have four stacks, four on the stack. If the front's pretty big, why don't we just do two stacks on the side of the...either side, you can have a nice front yard, a nice green area in the front, and also try to bring the house forward, even to even a bigger backyard than that, just in case by accident that deck goes go up, we don't have a problem later on that we have to put up a deck, you know, because we didn't realize that something was inappropriate.
And these applicants have indicated that they certainly will defer to the board's wisdom, and the more backyard is better for their families.
You know, instead of putting in four slots stacked up right in front, why don't we just do it, do it stacked, either side, and have beautiful front yard, beautiful lawn on the front, what's wrong with that? You know, why kick up the whole front of the back with a tennis court, with a blacktop?
The applicant would certainly comply with that request.
That's, you know, that's the one that I see over here. And, you know, the two feet is...it'll...we'll see later if we have any objective that we're willing to like, what we just said now. Any other comments or word memo? Any other comments or board members?
So, you have a basement steers on the left side of the home. Is there only going to be one set of stairs going into the basement? Exterior?
Yeah, there'll only be one exterior set of stairs.
So, Jerry, if you can make, we can make note that there'll only be... People later have been adding, on the other side of the home, second set of stairwells to the basement, creating double basement apartments.
But a lot of the trouble we have in Lakewood, if a developer comes in, gets something approved, then sells it to the people and tells them they can do what they want. Here, the applicant's here, and they're hearing what it's supposed to be. And they're planning on living in this neighborhood and being a good part of it.
I'm bringing up the basement, we just did. I see unfinished basement plan over here.
At this point, they have no plan.
Okay, so I'm sure there's one apartment going in here?
Well, they certainly tend to use their basement the way everybody's... Well, not the way people that legitimately use their basements in Lakewood.
Okay, okay. You said the right word, legitimately is the basement. We're not going to see here a roomy house.
No.
You know, a apartment has that, you know? This is nice and nice and big. Why don't we make three or four? You know, make a nice hallway, you know?
I'm fully aware that the law says only one rentable basement apartment, and they have no intention, and certainly if you need to hear them say that, they would be affirmed to say that. But that they should be...
I don't want to put that question in my head. Okay? Okay. Anyone else want to say something?
Go ahead. Brian, what's the difference in the space of this breakfast room that goes out? Like the... How far out is it going from the back of that house? If they were to put a deck in the back there, what would be the width of that deck?
Six point eight feet.
Six twenty feet. So, what's the actual footprint of the house going to be there? I don't think that's a lot, probably thirty percent.
Thirty two percent, but by taking off the two feet from the...
That would do it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that would be, the total would be... You have how many feet is there? So, it looks to me that it's about ninety square feet, because you have six and fifteen. The quality is a hundred square feet. So, the footprint based on that would be about two and a half and twenty seven square feet there. That's the footprint of the house, six twenty feet. What would that, what percentage would that be? I want to know what the lot coverage is. Very good. I have a different figure, I got it thirty five. When I did the numbers, it came out about a quarter to thirty five.
What's that? Judy, you're saying that the whole lot area coverage is thirty five percent?
It's thirty four percent.
Well, first of all, decks are...
I'm not even counting that, I got the hundred. Because it's six point something, and the length of this particular portion is about fifteen point eight. It's roughly a hundred square feet. The footprint of fifty nine by fifty three is thirty one twenty seven. If you take off a hundred square feet, it's thirty four percent. That's what I...
How do you get that, Judy?
I walk through it. Okay, so you take...
I was paying...
Which part do you want me to walk through?
How do you get thirty four?
Yeah, how do you get thirty four? Okay, so the, if you multiply the length fifty nine, the house is now fifty nine.
The house is fifty nine, eleven point seven and forty. I'll take eleven point seven plus ten point five, plus sixteen point six.
I get thirty... Sixty one by fifty three.
We didn't see the directions.
I'm outside, you have the outside numbers.
I'm at sixty one, yeah, okay.
It comes out sixty one point eight. If you take out fifty nine, it's thirty one twenty seven.
Okay, well, you have to take off the corners.
What?
You have to take off the, you have to take off the corners. On top of the living room, dining room area, to the corner is not fifty nine, that's only forty six.
Some percent.
Forty six point seven. Forty six, forty seven.
I'm looking at the ground footprint. The ground footprint? Yes. No, I understand that, so you took out the six point eight.
So, you should do it...
One hundred and twenty, one hundred and forty three.
Right. Does that make sense now?
That would be twenty nine.
That's almost thirty, thirty four point three. Okay.
I love it.
Okay, so it works with the other... Yeah, okay.
Brian, another question is, the interior, there's only one way to go basically through the house? Is that just that metal?
Yes.
Okay, is that done, Judy?
I'm sorry, you can...
Yes, one stair goes to the interior.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we're going to open to the public. Anyone in the public want to be heard on our appeal number? What number is this? Four zero two zero, pending offer?
Sir, would you raise your right hand?
Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? Would you please, speaking from the mic, give us your full name and spell your last?
Z E V W E I N T R A N E V.
And your first name, I'm sorry?
Z E V.
Go ahead.
How much feet does the house have?
The house itself, on the map?
Six hundred.
Twenty nine hundred square foot on a floor.
And the whole house together?
What?
The first and second floor is about a total of forty nine hundred square feet.
Five thousand square feet. Because I live in the back of the house. This duplex is the only duplex in the whole neighborhood that's very, very big. This house is forty nine hundred fifty feet, and I think it's way on the sides, for such a small lot. And the size is not, I would say by the west reading, because, I mean, the meaning was a little bit different. I didn't hear that the board was saying that this nine feet were happy, that this is what he made up. And said that if it was nine feet, then we have, and they didn't say nine feet is good enough. He wasn't here, but he picked up in some place that the board would be happy with nine feet each side. But I don't see the board's hat was found in the nine feet, it's on, now it's on the side, it's less than nine feet.
Ten.
It's ten on both sides.
Yes.
Okay, ten on both sides, yeah. Okay, but that is, it's a major house, and a very, very small lot. And the duplex, first of all, and he doesn't live in the neighborhood, there's no other house in the whole neighborhood that's so tremendous. Not one in the whole neighborhood, I live in that neighborhood, there's no house that's so big, that's five thousand square feet on such a lot. You can't find one house in the whole neighborhood like that. And this guy with the duplex, it's, I can explain the whole story of how the whole thing happened, but it wasn't really supposed to be like that. And for me, it's the back, the size, I have the duplex on one side of me, and this house on the other.
Where is your house, relative to this, where is this house?
The duplex is right behind my house, it's the next one.
Give me a point for the map, on the map, which is...
Why is it the duplex?
The orange is this house, right? Your right... Yes, so are you the one...
Behind the duplex.
Behind the duplex, which one is two behind the duplex?
It's right under it. No, it's right below it. The duplex is definitely hit with this next guy.
Oh, okay.
Or it's me, or the next guy.
Oh, got it, got it, so you're closer to this one. The next guy's not closest to this one, you are the closer one to this one.
Lock my way on him.
I don't, I don't, I don't see the line, okay. Okay.
Hit, hit, let me hit.
One oh eight eight. So, you're behind the duplex, so one lot away from this subject property.
Right.
You're cornering, that cat is cornered with this property. You're one...
Right, so I have, right behind my house, the duplex is in that just close to this house.
Because you're... So, your house starts fifty feet away from the corner of this property. Your lot starts, not your house. Your lot starts fifty feet away
From this guy's property.
From this guy's...
The house is close to the house, the duplex came up there, this house is...
I just want to show this to you. Brian, you have a call mark for me?
Chairman, just essentially what's in this debate, you know what we say?
Any call?
How does this big house...
Brian, you give me a second? I just want to get a, they clear on this thing with this house. That this is the house? And it's behind him, this is his lot, okay? Okay. Show this to the objection, if I'm correct. Yes, you can have your mark back. And then I just want to show Jerry and everyone who hacked into the house. I just want to make sure I colored the right boxes.
Which is his, the...
Green, green and two, orange and two, separate.
So, it's your backyard, which is closest to his backyard?
No. Two but...
Right, but this is the one right now. So, that's my, that's for this back.
What over there?
One oh one, one back to back.
I said, I said, yeah.
Show the frame.
He told me it was back to back, so I guess he... He said...
The green is, the green is just the one that's... The yellow is the duplex, the orange is the subject property.
You want off the corner from Clifton, or two, or three?
Three.
Three from Clifton?
Two.
Four. Four from Clifton?
The corner from Clifton.
Right, he said, he said it was that, okay.
Okay.
It's not house in the whole neighborhood like that. It's the first, it's a very, very overgrown house with this label like that.
Brian, are we, did we discuss any type of fencing around this property?
The applicant showed...
There's going to be a new final fence and a row of arbor, arborite along the Westerly property line.
The west?
Yes, the applicant, when they started the application, they spoke to a neighbor there, and the neighbor there said, being a good neighbor would be to put them in, and they put them in.
And what size fence are we putting in?
I would imagine a six foot...
A six, kind of four foot?
No.
What?
Eight foot high.
It's an eight foot high fence?
Yeah.
Okay. Does it mean eight foot high fence over there? Sort of block out most of it from you?
And the other way?
And the other way.
And the other way.
Okay, you'll probably need to grant you the fence.
No, no, Lakewood ordinance allows, if you're not within the front setback, eight foot.
Oh, okay. Okay, fine. Anyone else in the public want to be heard? Okay, seen none close to the public. Can I have final comments from the board and the motion?
Yeah, Chairman, a couple of questions.
Yeah.
What is the final wording on the decks? I mean, is it going to be two decks or one?
It's going to be no deck.
No deck?
So, it's going to be patio?
Patio.
French door, yeah, French door. And from the, on the new plan that's submitted tonight, from the end of the breakfast room, from the end of the lot, how many feet? Is that going to be?
Ten feet.
No, 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 no.
From the end of the house?
From the breakfast area.
Breakfast area is twenty six feet.
No, twenty feet. From the end of the breakfast area...
Breakfast area is what we're on, yes, twenty feet.
From here, from breakfast area to here, yes.
Okay, so this is one of the directions we need, how do you...
No, no, that complies with the ordinance.
The ordinance is... So, which two hands do you have?
We need a variance for combined, combined side yard setback of twenty five, where we're doing twenty and thirty two percent instead of thirty. And on the thirty two, just, you know, for the record, it's not thirty two percent of the whole thing, it's only part of the second story. The ground level is twenty nine hundred, the upper story is only two thousand. So, you lose some of the impact of the big house. And that's why I brought up the floor area ratio before.
But, Brian, but yesterday it's thirty two percent?
Yes.
Okay. And what, how much, how much smaller the house would be if you do comply with the thirty percent?
It would be, uh, two percent more, so it's two percent of...
Two percent of... Two, fifty, two hundred square feet, it'd be about one hundred sixty five, one hundred seventy... Yeah, one eighty. One eighty square feet, or less.
The one hundred seventy seven square feet left.
Which is as big as the sitting area.
Which, in my opinion, I'm looking at the plans, from thirty three point thirty three percent that you asked, now you're coming with thirty two, after just about everybody made a comment that it was way too big for the area. You're coming back with a one point three percent coverage less than that. It's still huge. I'm looking at the property and I'm looking at the house, dining room, breakfast, kitchen, another kitchen, homework room, playroom, family room, mudroom, grand pool, it's too much for the area. It doesn't fit. If you make it comply, at least it'll make fit, the neighbors will be fine, and the house will be a little bit smaller, it's just too big for that whole area, that's why. Two percent is not going to take it crazy, I'm not...
Well, as I indicated when I started, when you look at a house that's too big, you can do in this, in this zone, you can do two stories high. If you did two stories high, you could have the same five thousand square feet, twenty five hundred on each floor. And I don't think when the visual impact of that is going to be any better than this, because there's a lot of parts of this house that you don't see. You know, a couple extra feet in depth would reduce it, but nobody's going to see that, a couple extra feet in depth. And to go two story, and then you have a house laid out, these are end users that want a house that fits their family. And they're respectfully requesting those variances. And I know it's your job to determine if the benefits outweigh the detriment.
Brian, the chairman?
Go ahead.
Now, you know, I understand what my colleague is saying, that I basically do the same. You got two rooms there, called homework room and a family room, and a big thousand square foot basement. But I believe the homework room and the playroom could fit into that basement if it's only going to be used for the family and nobody else. Okay, so...
But that's for their parents when they come to...
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the house itself, and the second floor and the first floor, if you remove that little piece that you added, where the extra door is in there, okay? And which is a two room, basically a playroom and a workroom, all right? And you have those downstairs in the basement, then now, you, you know, I think it solves a lot of issues. Because these two rooms could be downstairs in the basement.
Well, it solves a lot of issues, and if this was a developer coming in saying, I want to build a house that somebody's going to move into, I wouldn't even argue with you, I would just say, go ahead and do it. But this is a custom house that's designed by the applicant who's here to fit their family. And they're respectfully requesting that.
Brian, if he could build a house with two floors and have everything he needs and two forms, why doesn't just do that?
Because...
Who cares? The impact of the size of the second floor, I don't think is, to me, it's not disturbing at all. I think, I think it's an issue of overcrowding the lot and the area. And if he were coming and saying that, you know, he has a lot, it's an odd sized lot, and he needs to have a side yard variance, you know, there's a good possibility, the board will look at it differently. But I don't see a need for this, if he can do everything he wants by doing it.
Well, he can't do everything he needs for this, because they've gone to an architect to design a house that fits their family, and, you know, certain people don't want to walk upstairs. I don't want to, I don't go upstairs in my house. This could conform with the thirty percent if he took two feet off the depth, and it's not going to look any different. If it's two feet less depth, it's going to meet the thirty percent.
The depth of the width?
The depth.
You could take out two and a half feet from, you know, five...
You could pick up two and a half feet from, you know, five feet tall and width and have a conforming house too. That would be exactly 30 percent. It'd be 29.9.
And, and, and again, if it was a developer that was building a spec house or building for somebody, these are applicants that want to build their house, and they're respectfully requesting that.
Brian, I hear.
Go ahead.
I, I see that you have a full set of steps going to the attic, is that probably finished?
But at, at this point, no. At some point in the future, if they need a sitting room up there and the, uh, if they, if they go to the township with, uh, the building department or the engineering department with an attic that's finished, it requires extra parking. So they would have to put extra parking. That's, that's not what they're, they're a young couple, they, they want to have the same thing. Every house plan I've seen is like, has steps going up to the attic. Uh, they have no intention.
You know, that's why we're asking.
Well, I guess the people who don't have them don't hire me. But any of the applications I've been hired on, when I look at the plans, they have steps going to the attic. I thought that was a, a standard thing. There's an outside steps to the basement, there's inside steps. They used to have outside steps, now they have inside steps to the, to the attic.
Yeah, that would create a little more square footage, you know.
But it, it's the same square footage, and, and if you add the third story on into a floor ratio that's permitted by ordinance, it bumps that floor ratio up. They're asking for less floor ratio than, than the ordinance permits. Just in order to accommodate the needs of their family, they're asking for it in this configuration.
All right. Anyone else have any insight? Okay, can we have a motion? Do we need a motion in one way or the other?
I make the motion that we deny.
I have a motion to deny from Hal Halberson.
I'll second.
I have a second to deny from Judah Riviet. Madam Secretary Roco, please, does everyone remember, yes means to deny, no means to approve?
Mr. Yeller?
Yeah.
Mr. Halberson?
Yes.
Mr. Nafali?
Yes.
Mr. Riviet?
Yes.
Mr. Ingraham?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
Does it make a difference?
No.
Sorry, motion denied. I'm sorry, sorry. Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna move on. Um, an old business, 40358 Aaron Mansour, Cherry Street.
Mr. Cherry wrote, engineer plan, October 25th, 2017. The applicant seeks minor subdivision approval to subdivide six existing lots to create nine new residential lots. Eight of the proposed lots have been designed as zero lot line properties with four duplex structures. One single family home is proposed on proposed lot 130.01.
Cherry Street. Is this the owner? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Miriam Weinstein on behalf of the applicant, Aaron Mansour. As I'm sure the board recalls, we began this application last month, and there was some confusion over the application as to who the owners were, um, and who the applicant was. So at Jerry's suggestion, the application was withdrawn, refiled, and renoticed. I personally prepared the application myself this time, so made sure that all, all owners were neatly listed on a separate schedule. Mr. Mansour is slated to be builder of the project, which is why he's listed as the applicant. Um, if you took a look at the application, as it was refiled, there are several owners, there are several owners, um, therefore, the, the logical party to be made, the applicant, was actually the builder. Um, the gist of this application is to subdivide six existing lots along North Oakland and Cherry Streets into a total of nine lots upon which eight duplex units will be constructed in four buildings and one single family lot. Two of the duplex buildings that are on North Oakland Street are already under construction and are act, and are actually nearly complete, and are pretty much just awaiting the readjustment of the lot lines. Um, we have letters from the seller's attorney, Mr. Kunslinger, stating that all buyers of those lots will provide with the current plan showing the dimensions of the lot that they will be receiving after the subdivision occurs. That letter was already provided to Jerry's office, but certainly we can provide it as an exhibit. Jerry, do you want, do you want me to provide that letter?
No.
You're good? Okay, good. Duplexes are permitted in the R10 zone, but only on lot sizes of 12,000 square feet or greater. Since the lot sizes here will be under 12,000 square feet per duplex, use variance approval is required. The single family lot is also under 10,000 square feet. Um, the plan was slightly redesigned as a result of feedback from the board, which Brian will go through as soon as we let him get to his testimony. Should be noted that this area is slated to be rezoned to R75 in the 2017 master plan. You know, you don't want to hear about it, but it is in fact slated to be rezoned. Yes, the town committee would have to adopt those ordinances, but we believe that they likely will. Um, this application would nearly be in conformance with the requirements of the R75 zone. The variance is requested, if this were, if this were rezoned to R75, would be what I think this board could characterize as de minimis. This is also an area needing redevelopment, and this project is also going to enable the developer to bring sewer to this area, which will certainly be a very worthwhile enhancement. Okay, Jerry, if I could ask that we get a Brian sworn at this point?
Mr. Clunney, where are the firms? Help the whole three out.
I did. Brian Clunney Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer and professional player. As Mark, uh, 3781 is the tax map of the area, showing the subject property in orange. The, uh, the blue are the duplexes in this neighborhood that have been approved by the zoning board. Uh, the green are a couple duplexes where the existing lots are big enough to accommodate them. It hinked in the area with duplexes that we don't talk about. Uh.
Uh, you might just take it off the record, please. Thank you.
Basically Cherry Street and North Oakland have been, uh, redeveloping, uh, and they've been redeveloping in accordance with the R75. The board has been listening to me for 10 years talking about the 2007 master plan. They recommended this. If only the town committee had adopted it, I would have saved a lot of, you guys would have saved a lot of time. The 2017 master plan again recommends this area as R75. Uh, so this application was submitted before the 2007 master plan was done, based on just the characteristics of the area, and, uh, fortunately, the planning board and optimistic the town committee, uh, see that this area is redeveloping very nicely. Big improvement with public sewer and improved streets, so whatever it was. If we look at, uh, the report, on page three, it indicates, uh, the need that's needed, we're in the, we're still in the R10 zone since as far back as 1989, the 1999 master plan. At one point before that, it was the A1 agricultural zone, but it's been in the R10 for a long time. Uh, and it's been designed basically in conformance with the R75 standards. Uh, we're looking for, uh, minimal lot area variances. We have four duplexes at 97 and 2 square feet, 98, 51 square feet, and two at 10,000 square feet. Uh, the, the average size of, of the duplexes is 9,888 square feet, which I would certainly characterize as de minimis.
Hold on a second. I have one of the 9702.
Yes.
And then I have one 9905. 5171 square point 20 plus 4734 point 31. What?
9905, I guess I am 9905, 9900.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, even better.
Even better.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, usually I would make the same mistake as this time.
I only have A1, if you do the other one.
You identified A1, can identify 2.
Uh, A2 is the, uh, mine is of the district plan, uh, that was submitted, showing, as Miriam indicated, uh, based on the inputs of the board last time, the lot line, for the ceiling, it used to go straight.
Right.
Uh, that area was taken out and, uh, the single family lot became smaller, so I have to make testimony, and these lots became bigger, that's how I got to 9905.
That is Jerry's something. Jerry, are we going to sort of, paint board over here?
Yes.
Before we.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
The single family lot, uh, 10,000 square feet is required for the R10. We're do, we're proposing 8,563 square feet. It will certainly be a very large, very, very nice lot on Cherry Street. Minimum rear yard setback, we only have one lot where we're showing 15 feet, uh, uh, which does conform with the R75, but doesn't conform with the R10. And that for this, uh, most subtly lot, because it's had a jog in the, uh, in the property line, it's the unusual, uh, shape of the property, uh, that, that we requested that variance. Uh, minimum side yard setback, we're proposing a 7.5 feet. Uh, consistent with the, uh, R75, consistent with all the other blue lots in this area, and exceeding the lots in the pink area. Uh, and the maximum building coverage, we have 33.85 percent to 34.66 percent, which exceed the 30 percent allowed by the R10, but are less than the 35 percent in accordance with the R75. The, uh, the density per proposed project is 8.1, one dwelling unit per acre, and the R10 allows 7.26, so we're 12 percent above that, uh, which I would call it a de minimis exception. And, uh, the R75 allows 8.71, so we're, we're lower than the density that's required by the, that's allowed by the R75. If we look at the, uh, master plan of 2017, uh, on the business statement, it says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles, and this certainly accomplishes that. The, un, under the, uh, background information, it talks about the need for housing, which certainly is provided, so this is providing needed housing as well as redeveloping an area. The municipal land use law, NJSA 4455D2, under the purpose of the act is to encourage maintenance action, guide the appropriate use of development of all lands and estates in the manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, agenda, welfare, and fight this one, that this plan does that. Uh, I don't think I introduced page three, which is the existing condition, which is also happening. You show it, and it shows in orange the whole property, and then in blue, the area where the, uh, duplexes are under construction. And I think that's where we went off the rails last time.
Right, let me tell you something, this, which one is under construction now?
Yes.
Which one?
The front, the 10,000 one.
The one that's in my top, this area.
The one.
So what are we approving, that we're including?
The one's fronting on Cherry.
Well, you're just, you're just approving, taking off the back part of the property so that we can add that to Cherry Street property.
The ones that go over are, are done.
Yeah, they're, they're built. They're waiting COs, they're just waiting to decide.
Okay, that's right, so our application is Cherry Street one?
Yes.
And taking a little bit off the back.
Here.
Yes. Possibly, but.
Okay, you see this line over here? That is the new line.
Yeah.
The issue we had last time was, who owns those?
Right, it's a case of.
And that's all.
Yes, that's, that's all, they were two issues. One issue was, was who owns what? And then I changed it down, the other one was that Jerry just wanted to see that the, those buyers knew that what they're getting is not going to improve that, ensure that yard, which we produced for Jerry.
And they do know that.
Are they aware of the known fact?
What?
Do they now know?
They knew.
They knew that.
They, they, they knew that, I just wasn't telling them.
I, I have the, I've been, I've received the proofs from the attorney for the, I guess, the seller of the North Oakland property, that those buyers know that they're losing that piece in the back.
They're losing the last 50, 35 feet or 50 feet, whatever it is.
Yeah.
And they're, Jerry, is that they're making those not conform anymore?
No, no.
No, they'll be.
Still conforming without that amount?
No, they're making Cherry Street house lots a little bigger, and, and still, North Oakland lots are still conforming.
Right.
What?
This is supposed to be, this is 10,000?
No, 10,000.
But they conform with the R75.
On the R75.
But this is not, this is an R10, not R75 yet.
Yes, correct.
So right now they're not conforming. You're turning into something that's not conforming.
Yes.
In a month or whenever it gets approved, it'll be conforming, but right now, we're changing something. And it's conforming, they're not conforming.
And that's, that's the relief for our request.
Right, so why don't you wait?
I'll go ahead, I want to wait two months.
You wait two months, then you don't have to be here, you do everything.
The application was filed long before the master plan was passed.
Yes, but the way he's looking right now, at 12,000 square feet and a 9,000 square, square foot lot, there's no way he can prove such a thing. Yes, in two months, it'll be beautiful, fine, it's de minimis. Right now it's not de minimis.
But it's, and it's important with the develop, redevelopment of the area. All the blue ones are.
Not, not exactly, not everything. It's a few that you depicted from there, not everything is this developing like that.
Not, not everything, so it's like the development is for duplexes, and all of the blue ones, which is a substantial number, are on variance lots.
And we buy this for.
And the pink ones are on substantial.
Not with his numbers. I think if you wait for two months.
In the past, we have used the 2007, let me tell you how this, how this worked, look at that. We used the 2007 master plan, which also said that this area should be 10,000 square feet. Which also said, should be, I'm sorry, which also said this area should be a 75 inch square feet. So since they are finally then approved it, we went ahead and gave various different approvals later on. Now, they just reiterated that R75, that this area should be R75, and, and it passed again. So that's where the basing is on, based on the 2000, 2007 till a week ago, and now they're basing it on 2017. So we're up to 10 years and a week.
And, and again, the reason that we, the reason not to wait is because those other units on North Oakland are complete. We're really waiting for this to get COs, so we really can't wait another two months with the town committee to take it, sign it, pass it.
Is that the move in?
Well, the buyers are going to lose their mortgages.
Why can't they move in now?
Well, we can't go ahead and get COs on those units and sell them, and then they get mortgages and put the mortgage on the larger piece of property and then we want to go ahead and subdivide it all?
But you know what the, but you know what the property's going to be, why don't you, they've made it now.
Because the lender, the lenders can't, can't work that way. So if the lender comes in and puts a mortgage on the property, it's going to be on the entire property the way it.
Why?
That's the way you mortgage.
That's the way it's going to work. And then we won't be able to get a partial release of that basic, it's not going to work.
But, and, and, under that kind of logic, then this applicant would be getting penalized for the fact that the master plan was finally adopted. If the master plan was still going on, we'd be saying 2007 master plan, and it would get approved just like the other ones. But it really doesn't seem to, it creates a hardship for people, uh, if, if, uh, that's the logic of wait. And, and if you wait, that's what it's going to be, but, uh, the waiting is a hardship.
Can you wait one second? But yeah.
I don't believe it.
But I, I said. Can I explain to you more clearly? What, what happens with residential lenders is a residential lender comes in and they make a loan, they're going to, they're going to base it on the survey. If we have the survey today, obviously the survey's going to show that larger lot in North Oakland. They're going to, the bank is going to put their lien on that whole lot. If we were to go ahead and subdivide that later, we'd have a problem. We're going to get that mortgage off that piece.
Then we survey the property and submit it the correct way.
It doesn't work that way. Residential lenders cannot figure that out.
Well, hold on, hold on. You could, you've asked for minor subdivisions as well as variants.
Right.
The planning board, the zoning board could grant the minor subdivision and deny the variants. And that way you'd have the lots the size you want.
Well, it requires a variance to create, to, to do, to get the minor subdivision because the lots are technically undersized because they're, they're conformed to the R75 standards.
Well, forget R75 for the moment. I, I think in response to what you've indicated, Mr. Halberson, you could theoretically grant the minor subdivision, which takes the back piece and puts it on the other piece. But that doesn't necessarily allow, require you to build duplex, allow you to build duplexes on 9,000 square foot lots.
On new ones, you're saying?
On the ones on Cherry. That would satisfy your lender on the houses on North Oakland.
Right?
But that's
Okay, but let's, let's not confuse the issue further. I'm sorry, so let's not confuse the issue further.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean to confuse you, I meant to undo, unconfuse.
Yeah, but now we've got a whole, with the, with the mortgage lender, how it works, so all right.
So, I, I was on the, uh, municipal land use law, NJSA forty-four
None of mortgages.
D-two, uh, and I went over, uh, A, uh, then, you know, it approves the general welfare, and E is, uh, promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons' neighborhoods. And it's my testimony, this will contribute to the well-being of the neighborhood, the improvement to the road, the, the structures being replaced with new modern structures and providing housing opportunities. Uh, we're asking for a D variance for special reasons, and, and special reasons to what I articulated in the municipal land use law. Uh, we're enhancing the general welfare of the area. This is an area that the township, uh, for more than ten years, has, has noticed needed to be cleaned up. When it came to the planning board under the master plan, John Franklin, who lives a few blocks away, was very adamant in that this is an area that's cleaning up well, and he wants to see it continuing to be developed, uh, in that fashion, uh, and he was a major proponent of, uh, continuing that, because every master plan recommendation from two thousand and seven was studied by the planning board to decide which ones make sense and which ones don't, and the planning board decided this one makes sense. So it, it, it's my testimony that, uh, that there are special reasons for this, and it can be granted without any detriment to the zoning, zoning ordinance, without any detriment to the general welfare. Uh, under the, uh, report, uh, it was an indication that I should provide testimony on the improvements that are being made on North Oakland, uh, and the subdivision that we spoke about, uh, for the duplexes that are almost finished, um, and they are responsible for, uh, the improvement in North Oakland, so North Oakland will be, uh, improved to township standards, with curb and sidewalks, and, uh, and obviously, as part of this application, Cherry Street will be improved to township standard, with storm sewer, public water, uh, curb sidewalks, and, and roadway.
Uh, quick question for you.
And all the standards with, with irrigation and, and frontage will be complied with.
On this note, we're widening Cherry Street? I see here it's a proposed eight-foot road widening easement?
Yes.
So the numbers that you're just giving us, ninety-nine oh five and ninety-seven oh two, is that after the road wi, after the eight feet?
That, that includes the, uh, road widening easement.
So it's after the road widening easement, deduct the road widening easement?
We did not deduct the road widening easement.
That's why the easement is supposed to be dedication.
That's why the easement is supposed to be dedication?
Correct.
Okay. So this ninety-nine oh five can eventually become, uh, ninety-six? What? Hello?
Uh, ninety-seven hundred times seventy-five feet.
Ninety-seven hundred, why ninety-seven hundred? Seventy-five times eight feet, this
It's smaller, but
Ninety-seven oh two, ninety-seven oh two.
Yeah, but it's, 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 it's seventy-five times, times eight feet.
It's approximately three hundred and twenty feet per lot, eight foot wide and a balance
Eight foot wide, and about Yeah, or, or, or about thirty-seven five, thirty-seven five, whatever that is.
All right, so it's, it's not quite three hundred and twenty, but
And, and that is consistent with the other approvals
What's the number? We've done what's consistent with what?
But it seems like you guys had figured it out yourself, so
Okay, so, so it's about, so it's about thirty-six, so it's about thirty-six hundred square feet, the lots, at the end of the day? I'm sorry, ninety-six hundred square feet, uh, on one, and ninety-three hundred the other one?
If that be, if it's dedication.
What does the easement mean?
But it, the easement means the town can widen, the same as the, they don't want all these other lots along here, and it needs ninety-seven hundred, it's the same way to the right-of-way.
The easement means that the town can widen, so the town decides in a year from now to widen Cherry Street, they're gonna make these lots a total of three hundred square foot
But the, the widening doesn't put pavement on, on the lot. The, the X three foot is so there's room for working and, and curbs and sidewalks and utilities, it's not for curb or pavement.
And it belongs to the owners.
We're not making the blacktop bigger?
No.
To be thirty-two feet, and then, um, a sidewalk, like a normal fifty-foot right-of-way?
Well, well, what's the purpose of the, the easement then? That's a hot, a big sign.
It's probably fifty-foot right-of-way. It's probably fifty-foot right-of-way.
It says a roadway widening easement, so isn't the purpose of to widen the road?
The roadway widening easement is so the town can widen the roadway. There's, there's thirty-four foot, but it not to put the pavement. There's thirty-four foot of right-of-way, so thirty-two foot of pavement will fit in that thirty-four feet, and then you have another eight feet for utilities and sizes.
So you're telling me, and tell me I'm wrong, that the eight feet does not belong to the, to the township?
Correct.
That's why it's an easement and not a dedication.
That's what, a dedication means it belongs to the township, this does not belong to the township.
Correct.
So they are not responsible for putting the sidewalk on this eight feet?
But the applicant is gonna put the sidewalk in that eight feet.
If he, so cho, chooses
Well, he has to put the sidewalk
In order to get a building, that is gonna do.
He can put the eight feet in there right-of-way, on the thirty-two, on the thirty-two foot right-of-way? No, you can't, okay.
The state's not gonna allow that.
Okay, so all you're telling me is that, that this is, belongs to him, where is when you have a fifty-foot right-of-way, right? You have the blacktop, the curb, the grass, the sidewalk. That makes fifty feet, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Here, what you're telling me is no curb, no sidewalk, just blacktop, thirty-four feet.
Then it'll look the same.
I, I understand it'll look the same. I understand it'll look the same.
It's just that this portion is on the, is on the owner's property versus the township property.
That's what I want to
That's the difference, but I also do wanna point out that those other blue lots along the, along Cherry Street have the same situation, so this board hasn't proved this scenario with me.
I already picked up at a mess.
Okay, but he's still
Well, this is, this is the last one, so why do you say?
Right.
Some of these are the same.
I, I have no problem with it. Uh, thirty-six hundred works for me.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? I, I, you know, I'm just trying to, I thought that all along, all these past approvals that we've done, was we're gonna make Cherry Street nice and wide, sidewalks going in, blacktop's gonna be at thirty-two feet?
Yeah.
And we'll widen the whole
That is gonna happen. That is gonna happen.
It is gonna happen?
Yes.
Okay.
It is their property.
It's on their property. The sidewalks are their property. So technically speaking, they're front wide, some from the curb, not from the, and edge of the sidewalk.
For off here.
Yeah, that's correct.
So technically speaking, he can then build a lot closer to the curb than his conventional regular lot.
I wouldn't call it a lot lot.
It's not much, okay.
It would be good.
It makes sense today, where the shoe was able to put his door onto his shoe right on the curb. Here, now I got it. Because of the, I couldn't figure that out, okay. The easement was able to put it on, okay.
So, Brian, the road currently is how wide? Like, right now, to be
I think it's probably paved like twenty feet.
Twenty feet, and when this development, if and when it gets built, how wide is that road?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, and the developer will make it thirty-two feet.
I'm sorry, what's thirty-two feet? I couldn't hear you.
It's all the way to Cherry Street.
From where to where? Just in front of these homes, or from eighty-eight, where is that gonna start from?
It's gonna be all the way up to this last house.
And where is it gonna start?
It's gonna start at eighty-eight.
What are you talking about, what?
I wanna know, we, I wanna know, right now, he, he's saying that's twenty feet. He's giving testimony that it's going to be thirty-two feet, and that the developer will pay it. So I wanna know from where to where?
But you have to remember that each white spot in between, you can't do anything for this to happen.
That's, that's, that's what I like, the, the testimony, I'd like to know exactly where
This, this developer will agree from blue to the blue, that's gonna be responsible.
What, what is, where, can we, can we define that?
No.
What does blue to blue mean?
Yeah.
Uh, from the northerly line of lot one thirty-three to the southerly line of lot one twenty-nine.
Including the two white lots, including those two.
Including those two?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so he only goes two also, okay.
Now, is that blue, is that already widened?
No.
So there's gonna be a cutting, people that are gonna be driving into eighty-eight will have to kind of avoid a bump out?
I, I'm quite certain that all of these approvals will get together and make sure that the eighty-eight is done.
Okay.
You know, we've got a
It was approved, I know.
It was approved, same condition.
Yeah, I, I Please, no, I'm
So, Brian went, Brian went, went I'm sorry, Brian, did you say the northerly end of one thirty-three to the southerly end of what lot?
One twenty-nine.
Well, one twenty-nine is, oh, I see, okay, yeah, sorry. Do they, does this developer own those two lots, and if not, do they have permission to cut in on those two lots?
Well, if they can make it thirty-two feet in the existing right-of-way, they won't be putting sidewalk because, unless they get approval for the sidewalk, then they can't go in.
There's no sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay, now the front yard setback says thirty, does that thirty start from, where does that thirty start from? Because now we're not sure
Starts, starts from the property line, which is a foot behind the curb.
So, it's not gonna be thirty feet, like a standard thirty foot setback like we would ordinarily have? It's going to be, how, how far is the, the front of the home going to be from, from the edge of the sidewalk?
Yeah, it's
The top of the
The top of the body is While, while he's doing that, I do wanna clarify, the applicant just told me that one thirty-two and one seventy-two, this applicant has no control over, so that's the two white lots here, and here, so you're optimistic that the owners of those lots are going to do something with those lots, and certainly are going to widen the roadway, but it's not part of this application.
Wait, the roadway is being paved by this developer, thirty-two feet wide, and it's gonna be a one-foot right-of-way unpaved on each side of the road, is that correct?
Well, what I want, what I was pointing out was that one thirty-two and lots one seventy-two?
Yeah.
This applicant has no control over those lots. They don't own those lots, and they can't just take fifteen feet off, you know, they, they can't take that dedication off.
So it's not gonna be blue to blue?
Well, the testimony was
So what, so
It was a mistake, it was a mistake. Brian's testimony was mistaken, that the blue to blue is gonna be paved.
So the only place that the school will be widened is just in front of this, this gate?
Well, it's the blue lots and the ar, the blue lots and the orange lots. The white lots, we're optimistic that whoever owns those lots is going to work with us, but it's not part of this.
Judah, we gave, we gave a poll on that corner, Route eighty, and I'm assuming that that's gonna happen, so it's a matter of, like, a small area, it's the white lots, so show whoever's gonna want it.
The question is, that, so what's gonna happen? If there's something, if there's something wired, then it's gonna Yeah, okay, okay. Permission to those lots, the street is controlled, I guess that's a chance.
They did that, Brian, they did that on
Guys, it's a thirty-foot, it's a, um, Judah, it's a thirty foot, thirty-four foot wide road, doesn't mean you can't pave thirty-two feet of the thirty-four. You know what I'm saying?
Right, I just wanna clarify, this applicant can only give towards the road widening what's on his property. He can't give the other lots, but, but most likely, those other lot owners are gonna give it as well.
It's only road widening easement where the, where the sidewalks can be on there anyway. The blacktop is staying within the confines of the current, um, um, roadway.
Mr. Flannery, let me, let me see if I can try to make it worse. The, the area that you're gonna blacktop, thirty feet wide, I think before you said down to the southern side of lot one twenty-nine, but that's not correct.
They did that on Bridge Avenue, I worked that.
You don't own one?
We don't own one seventy-two.
I, I assume that if the blue corner, lot one thirty-three is well, uh, if this applicant comes in to develop, that's forty feet of pavement that when you have a machine there, you're gonna pay from there to there.
But who owns lot one thirty-three?
One thirty-two.
One thirty-two, somebody else, no?
Well, all right, let's, let's forget about somebody else for a second. Your client owns one thirty and one thirty-one, right?
Yes.
All right, so he's gonna pay thirty-two foot wide pavements in one
And so on the plan, he's gonna provide the, the parkway in front of his property, uh, the plan show it's going, it's going first, but the assumption is that the other people in the area are gonna do that, uh, and then in front of his property, he put a sidewalk on three.
All right, hold on, so he's gonna pay, he's gonna put the thirty-two, thirty-two foot wide, wide pavement on, uh, lots one thirty and one thirty-one?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not going
And aside, and aside.
But it doesn't mean he can't do blacktop on the white, can you do blacktop of thirty-two feet throughout the home, right street, when you have a thirty-four foot wide road right now? You have thirty-four foot road, um, um, thirty foot
There were thirty-four foot
Right-of-way. Right-of-way, so doesn't mean, he doesn't necessarily mean he can't put thirty-two feet of blacktop of the thirty-four feet, all the way down, all the way down the whole street.
Well, he can, sure.
He just can't put sidewalks on the ones that he doesn't control, that are curved, that's what he can't
The town's property does belong
Right, but he can do the, but he'll certainly put, put the blacktop.
So, then what are we, then what are we
That, 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 you're okay?
I'm fine, but I think the applicant
Guys, guys, guys.
I think the applicant, and that's why I tried to put this down, I think he's saying he's only putting blacktop in front of his two lots, he's not going to, uh
Go ahead, go ahead. The way I understand is doing blacktop from the corner?
No, 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 he's not.
That is, that's what you want, understand?
That's, that's not his testimony.
The first blue house is not gonna blacktop of thirty-two feet?
The first blue, the first blue house is not part of this application.
I know that, but you're not
It's a different developer.
I, I understand that, but there's a road widening easement on the first blue one as well?
Correct.
So you're gonna do that over there also thirty-two feet?
That developer's gonna do that.
I understand that, but when you do it, you're gonna do the whole lot
The streets going to get paved.
Excluding the two white spots.
The other, yes, and the other thing that's happening is that all the developers on this street are working together to bring the sewer. If this project doesn't happen, they're not gonna bring the sewer.
Well, help me out, the, the, the lot on the corner of one, one thirty-three of Cherry Street, and I don't know what the other name of the street is.
Ocean Avenue.
That's now, oh, that's, okay, that's now
Guys, guys, guys.
Please stop, please stop, we're trying to figure this out for you, all right? Lot, the lot on the corner is now not improved, is that correct? It's vacant? All right, well, let me ask you...
It's vacant.
Is Cherry Street now paved?
No.
All right, well, then how is somebody who's going to buy one of these duplexes going to get to Ocean Avenue? If it's not going to be paved to...
It's paved, but it's 22 wide, right? What's it, what...
You just said it wasn't paved.
No, I'm sorry, it doesn't mean it's paved, it's 32 feet, Jerry, I'm sorry.
It's paved 20...
It's paved 20 feet, Brian, Brian said that, he had more, 20 to 22 feet wide.
Well, 22 feet wide is not wide enough for regular traffic, these houses are...
Well, the IRS has a standard for 18-foot wide road, 18 feet, you can't prepare.
Yeah, but that's on a private road, that's on a public street.
No, no, public streets, they have a standard for 18-foot wide road, but no...
Brian, Brian, we're not bringing in, we're not even going to discuss 18-foot wide IRS, so please, please, don't even go down that road. Don't even go down that road.
Why can't the applicant extend the pavement 32-foot wide to Route 88?
That's what I, that's what I was assuming we're going to do.
Well, right now, he's not doing it, so let's find out why he can't do it. And you can get contributions from the other developers if you want.
No problem, the applicant will do it.
Okay, that's what I wanted, you're hoping?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I...
So, now we're talking about the quarter of the 80s that they built, where they can see, they will have 32-foot pavement from the southerly line.
All the way to the end of the line.
To the northerly line of their property, 130.
And what do you have on the blue ones? 130 or 1? 130, it's 21.
They're going to the sou... No, no, Brian, they're going to the southerly line of 130.
The northerly line is south.
Right. Right, so what's the other, the other north blue one and the...
Both of them, both of them probably have to be paved all the way out to Route 88, we would be having...
But are they also going 32 feet?
They're going, they're going 32 feet, there's white slots in between.
So, skip those white slots.
Our, our builders are only going...
What?
I said, they'll have to work it out. Yes, we're going to do it.
That's it, okay, good, further, let's go, next. Next. Let's go.
Just, just, I just want to confirm one thing, this, this will have nothing to do with the CEOs on the North Oakland side?
Oh, we know that, we don't have to remember.
As long as it has nothing to do with North Oakland.
There is no...
No, Cherry Street will be...
We discussed, North Oakland has a nice 50-foot right-of-way over here.
Right.
I have no problem with North Oakland right now. I would just, we just brought up 34 feet, but it says there will be a roadway easement on our block.
Okay.
Okay, done, we're ready to go, okay.
I just want to make sure, the 32-foot wide pavement is going to be installed to Ocean Avenue and to what I think is the southern end of Route 130. Lot 130.
No, there's, uh, was that the north? The north.
Is this the North Ave?
Is this the North Ave here?
That's the north.
Well, what's that? Well, which way is the North Ave going?
The right of the road.
Okay, got you, got you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out...
Now, we don't, I don't think, as a condition of approval, I don't think, and we understand, I don't think the board would have an issue with getting building permits before the pavement, but the pavement's got...
My CEO.
My CEO has that pavement.
Yes.
That's fine, and just to make sure, obviously, then the subdivision map can get bumped, because our main concern is that North Oakland should not be impacted by this at all. Shouldn't be a condition of resolution to lie in.
Understood.
I just want to make sure that's a resolution, there's no...
Tell me tomorrow.
Okay, guys, 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 a little lower, guys, a little lower, please, thank you. Okay, anyone from the public want to be heard on appeal number of 4035, please step up. Please step up to the mic, thank you.
Sir, would you raise your right hand, please, do you affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes.
Give us your full name and spell your last.
Simon Kline, S-I-M-O-N-K-L-E-I-N.
And your first name, or sorry?
Simon, S-I-M-O-N.
And your address?
118 Somerset Avenue.
What's your last name?
Klein.
Klein?
K-L-I-N.
Klein.
Not related.
Or Klein store.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, what was that address again?
118 Somerset Avenue.
And you're not related?
No. Um, I moved in about two years ago to the neighborhood, when I moved in, it was not developed yet at all, we were... I moved in two years ago on Somerset Avenue. Two years when we moved in, my kids were scared to go outside, it was very not developed, now it became much better, but we still don't feel safe enough, as a matter of fact, last week, my kids came running home, the two people were chasing him, he was scared to go out, so we just wanted it to be developed and more neighbors, more residential, which will just feel much more safe.
Can you point it to the map where you live, right behind you? I know where our point is, where is it? Where is Somerset Avenue, I'm relatively speaking to your... You live on 153, right next to that pink box?
Yes.
You didn't say the right word, then.
I live here, 153.
Okay, okay, got it, thank you, thank you, next.
Sir, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, tell the whole truth? Yes, could you spell your last, give us your full name and spell your last?
Kastriel Leffkowitz, L-E-F-K-O-W-I-T-Z, I live on 125 North Oakland, just moved in a few months ago. Kastriel, K-A-S-R-I-E-L. I live on 125 North Oakland, which actually right on Cherry, and I like that this area is a great area, it's growing slowly, and it's still unsafe, recently, I had two nights ago, um, people throwing cans on my house, neighbors very worried, and when people come to, they hear about the development, you want it, you want it to develop, they always, because I love, I love the area, and I'd love to also stay there, I have some renting now, but I still want to buy there, and there's crazy noise, and it's unsafe, dark, there's nothing going on, and my kids are unsafe, I'm scared of walking the street, I'm scared of walking the street by night, and from all sides, we have tons of noise, and if you see the wrong development, it's a much more safer area.
So, you want more development and it'll be less noisy? We understand you, thank you, I don't mean to make fun of you. Hold on, would you raise your right hand, sir, not the other right, the other right? Boy, we're going to have you affirm, are you... Do you affirm to tell the whole truth? Can you give us your full name and spell your last?
Joseph Wax, W-A-C-H-S, I live at 180 Ridge Avenue, Ridge, Cherry, they're all in the same area, um, the whole Ridge area, on my block, I have the cops there almost every single night, and someone was there, one of the, like, that was walking, or you might, was walking down the block, one of the neighbors... One of the, one of the gentlemen was walking down the block, got, got, uh, got his, they knocked with his hat, they knocked over everything, but they started fighting with him, fist fighting in his face, uh, before circus, that was someone there before circus, a different neighbor was starting fighting. We, I feel it's unsafe, and so does all my neighbors feel it's unsafe, in new development, with new, with new structure, with the new housing and all that, it would be a better for the neighborhood.
Sir, give me your name, spell your name again, slowly, please.
W-A-Joseph, Y-O-S-E-F, Wax, W-A-C-H-S.
Are you related to him?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, you swear, you're going to raise your right hand?
Right here.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I do.
And your name?
Fishel, F-I-S-C-H-L, West Goldman, G-O-L-B, B-E-R-G.
And where do you live, sir?
640 Seventh, Seventh, Seventh Street, downtown Beautiful Lake with New Jersey, 08701. I have no clue if these properties are secure enough, but if I say, whoa, you know,
You know the name?
Four cars that we have, and if Solomon wants to go for his car accident, they have to go right through the hole, the other thing is he had a friend, so they smashed into each other, so I've been looking at the reports from the last couple weeks, accidents every day, before we build, when we do this, do that, more accidents, but less safe.
Are you in the auto body shop business?
I'm sorry?
In the auto body shop business? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, would you raise your right hand, please, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I do.
And could you give us your full name, spell your name, last?
Cheryl Garrett, G-E-R-E-T-Z.
G-E-L? Thank you.
44 Cap'n Field Circle. I'm the owner of Lot 177, which is 119 North Oakland. My husband and I bought this house approximately 10 years ago for my elderly mother and my disabled brother, and they have been living in this house on North Oakland for the past 10 years. We are very familiar with the property and area, since every day, family members, myself, my husband, or my children, are at the house helping them out. The beauty of this neighborhood that we have enjoyed all these years is the smaller houses, open spacious backyards, and privacy, which is of particular importance to us because we have a beautiful pool in our backyard. Let me explain to you what's going on, I have a diagram that explains very clearly. This is the house that I own. The lots next door to me, 178 and 179, had two small, single homes. They were knocked down, and a duplex, which will hold four families, was built on each lot. This was allowed because each lot did have the required 12,000 square feet. But now, here's what's not fair, the applicant wants to move the property line back 40 feet and take the backyards of North Oakland and add it to the lots on Cherry. Then he proposes to build a duplex here... And here, and a single family here. And all will need multiple variances. If he does that, the properties on North Oakland will be less than the 12,000 square feet required, and he wouldn't have been allowed to build a duplex on them. These backyards belong to the North Oakland lots, you can't have it both ways. They were used to build the duplexes on North Oakland. Now that the duplexes are built, you can't use them for Cherry, that's not fair. And what's really upsetting to us is that our privacy is being taken away. It's one thing to have a duplex towering over the front part of our backyard and our pool, but to have another duplex coming alongside the rear of our property is really not fair. Zoning has setback requirements for a reason. My rear setback is 20 feet, which gives me privacy. Not does, not only does the house behind me need 20 feet, but the house adjacent also needs 20 feet, otherwise you could see in on the diagonal. The 20-foot buffer zone needs to be enforced along the whole property line to give me privacy from all my neighbors. Now, by moving the lot line and building a duplex that is coming into the 20-foot buffer zone right alongside of my backyard, overlooking the pool, I am going to be losing my privacy. In addition, there's another very important factor to take into consideration, and that is the overcrowding of Cherry. This application is one of the first in redeveloping Cherry. There are a lot of investors who are watching this case very closely, and you will be setting a precedent. What you do for one applicant is not going to be an isolated case. Here, the applicant owns two lots on Cherry with about a total of approximately 22,000 square feet, which would allow him to request a subdivision of a conforming duplex on a 12,000-square-foot lot and a conforming single house on the 10,000-square-foot lot. Instead, he's asking to build two duplexes and one house. And frankly, I'm surprised he didn't even ask for three duplexes, but you never know. The duplexes and one house will be housing for over, for 10 families, and the driveways are going to be covering all the street parking. Imagine this means onto the whole street, Cherry is a very narrow street to begin with, and it's a dead end. Where are extra cars going to park? On Route 88? And also, this is going to have a tremendous impact on the whole neighborhood. More traffic, more overcrowding, the traffic on Route 88, and even on the street of North Oakland, it's going to have a lot more traffic because Cherry is a dead end, and North Oakland is an access street. So, if cars are coming from that side of town, they use North Oakland to get to 88 and then to Cherry. I'm asking the board to enforce the zoning requirements, which are there for good reason, do not allow this to be approved, please, for our quality of life, our privacy, and the future residents of Cherry. Thank you.
Cherry.
Yes.
Oh, anyone from the public, yeah, anyone else, sorry, go ahead.
Charles Gavitz.
God, give me that against you. Thank you, do you affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
And would you give us your full name and speak into the mic and spell your last?
Charles Gavitz, G-E-R-E-T-Z, 44 Cap'n Field Circle. I'm co-owner on Lot 177. Uh, I think my wife said it a lot better than I could, just wanted to follow your points. The way I understand the variance is to help satisfy existing conditions. I don't understand what existing conditions in North Oakland would allow the board to grant the variance on the North Oakland properties. They will be nonconforming if the, if the variance is granted, because right now, they're only a little bit over 12,000 square feet, and we are currently in R10 zone, and I don't really have any principle. Also, there's really, there's no parking, I mean, sorry, there's plenty of parking proposed on North Cherry, but that's pretty much all that's going to be happening in front of all these houses. We have, I believe, around 160 running feet of parking on, of driveways, and there's really nothing else there, there's no barriers in front of any of the properties. I would like this, I would like to go down to reject this application.
Okay, anyone up next?
Hi, good evening, my name is Eliza Paschke.
Would you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes.
And would you give us your full name and spell your last?
Eliza, last name is Paschke, P-A-S-K-E-S.
And help, help me out with your first name, please.
E-L-I-E-Z-E-R. For Shamans Street.
Thank you.
I mean, I've been living in Lakewood for over 12 years, and many times when we walk on Saturday, we walk into that area of Cherry Street, in that area, I go have little kids, I have kids of all ages, and it's something really, like the others mentioned before, it's an area that really, not to say the least, it's not safe, something I'm scared, I always have to go, even my older kids, I wouldn't allow them to walk there on their own. As a girl, a daughter the age of 15, I wouldn't allow her to walk there on her own, even with a little kid, something really, not a safe area. Like all the, those I mentioned before, they, it's really nice to see Lakewood developing, and though, in these areas, that's what development is meant for, in areas which weren't safe before, and now they're going to get safe, areas which my wife and kids were scared to walk before, now they'll be, feel safe to walk there. Even my 15-year-old daughter could walk with my younger daughter to go visit friends that live on those blocks. I really think that the applicant is really asking for a variance, something that's with the spirit of the area, something that's conforming with the rest of the area, it's the look of the area, that area really turned around, the whole Ridge area, that whole area is a totally different area, it's a beautiful area when you walk over there on Saturday, it's totally different than it was before, there's no loud music, it's really, there's a lot of serenity, it's a quiet and peaceful area. I really request, I kindly request from the board to take this into consideration and approve this application.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yes, sir, would you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes.
Would you give us your full name and spell your last?
Chaim Chusid, C-H-U-S-I-D. Chusid, C-H-U-S-I-D. For Yerek, Y-E-R-E-K Drive.
Where's that?
Living in the garden? Somerset, Birmingham? Go ahead. I've been living in the Ridge area for approximately six and a half years, and as they said before, I was scared to walk out at night. I do respect people's privacy, but it is a fact that the neighborhood is... There are bad neighbors, and it's getting cleaned out slowly, and as the time is going on, certain blocks are less scary to walk out at night. I personally would not walk more than the block closest to me Friday night myself. And we just had an incident with a shooting, we had, we had a drunken driver who knocked four cars, so he's worried about the accidents, as far as I know, it's not coming from the crowdedness, it's coming from whoever's living there. I do have drugs going on under my window, wake me up at 3 o'clock in the morning sometimes when the noise, I have drinking alcohol, and same few guys, which are coming from the whole neighborhood, and I think that they'll build up the neighborhood and develop it, it'll definitely be a lot safer and much more pleasant.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yes, Matt, would you raise your right hand, please, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? And could you spell, speak into the mic and give us your full name and spell your last?
Nachama Goldstein, G-O-L-T-S-T-E-I-N. 31 Kingsfield Drive. I don't live in this area, but this is like cutting too much on one lot, and I can say a lot more, but I think that maybe it's settled off. And just to say to all the people that say things need to be developed, people that say, you're not saying that you can't develop this area, you are allowed to put a duplex and a single family home there, and that should make the neighborhood safer, I don't think having more people squished into a tiny part will make it more safer. And that's what I want to say, I think this application should not be approved.
Thank you, anyone else? Seeing minimal close to the public. Jerry?
Yes.
As you know, or as you don't know, I don't know if you're familiar... As you know, or as you don't know, I don't know if you're familiar, we just went through a whole new master plan, which was adopted by the planning board and had a first reading by the township committee.
Right.
Right? So we're up for the second reading of the township committee.
Right.
This rumor has it that this second reading will take place before the year ends. Right?
Yes.
I don't know if it's going to happen or not, but rumor has it that the township has to have the second reading and have the, the township committee has to adopt the planning board recommendation before year ends.
That's true. You can't have an ordinance on first reading and second reading. It straddles the end of the year. You can't do that.
Right. So it has to be done before, before, before year end for whatever reason, state issues or whatever, whatever's going on. Right? Having said that, when this does get approved in literally six weeks from now, right? I don't think this application has to be here. I think this application goes straight to the planning board to get approved. Is that correct? Everything is going to be conforming.
I think that was Mr. Nafali's correspondent, that was he said.
Yeah, but I want to step further. We would say hypothetically it's...
If this becomes an R75 zone...
Which we know is closer to reality than the master plan in 2007.
Then these lots are conforming.
Right. But this master plan is more in reality of what's happening than 2007, which we spoke about for 10 years. This is going to happen within six weeks.
Chairman, what you're saying is correct. Assuming it's adopted on second reading and assuming someone doesn't sue to defeat the ordinance.
Well, even if he sues it, it's going to be in the year two. I'm sorry, in 2018.
In the meantime, I'm told, the testimony is that they need COs for the houses on Oakland.
Yeah, but this is what I'm trying to say. What I'm trying to say is, so for argument's sake, today we are November, November 13th, right? Whenever the next township committee meeting is, in two weeks from now, three weeks from now, it's going to get adopted. They can just go to the planning board and submit an application and build exactly what they presented it to us.
That's correct. If the ordinance is adopted and if it's not, and if somebody doesn't sue to overturn it. That's right.
Well, if somebody sues it, until the judge doesn't rule on it, you can't do anything. And they're going to go forward.
Well...
Unless the judge puts in a jurisdiction that everything's a whole.
I, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So what we're seeing here is something which is working more towards reality than we have ever seen in the past 10 years.
Okay.
That's what I want. I just want to understand if I'm correct on that.
Well, if the ordinance is adopted on second reading, yes, you're correct.
Okay.
Because then these lots would be conforming.
Then they can just come in. So just a question of, do we tell it to wait for the ordinance to be adopted? Or do we just say, you know what? We know they're going to be adapted because that's where the township is heading. Why make them wait?
Well, I guess the applicant's going to respond that they need some COs for the houses or the lots on North Oakland. And if they have to wait for all of that to occur, they won't get to the planning board until March or April or whatever.
Correct. So what I'm trying to say is, I heard what the neighbor said about this private CEO, and I really feel for her. But regardless, if we were to say, okay, it's not adopted. We're not going to pass it. We're not going to approve it because she asked us not to approve it. Within six weeks from now, they can just come right back to the planning board and get it approved.
Mr. Chairman, not really, because if you, if with the new, if we approved it, I mean, the new smaller lot on North Oakland Street will not even be 7500.
You don't need, you need 10,000. And it is 10,000.
No, that's a lot.
Yes, it is.
We have a 97 and a 99 hundred square feet, so we would have to take a few square feet out of the single-family lot. So it would be virtually the same thing.
With the lot reduction, 10,000 square feet. It's still this, 5,000, 5,000. No, hopefully it's 12,000. The whole piece comes from 10,000. No.
If the subdivisions approved, Mr. Gelli. Unless my math is wrong on my phone, if the subdivisions approved, the lots on North Oakland will each be in excess of 5,000 feet.
Right. Well, on the left, I'm trying to figure out. So how deep are the lots right now on North Oakland Street?
133 feet.
133 feet. So if you take off...
No, 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 no. The original lot. From the curb to the original lot.
170 feet.
133 plus the 36.
Yes.
If the subdivisions approved, these lots will be generally on North Oakland, 37 and a half feet wide and generally 133 feet.
Which is, which is my question.
Conforming R75 lot.
Right.
Yes.
So we will be conforming.
Yeah.
And there's an excess of 1,000 square feet over here to make this a 7500. But they can take the 1,000 square feet and just disperse it over the front lots and make each one closer to 10,000.
So, one second. You've got here 87 and a half feet on the side. What's that? So that's 87.5.
Survey. S-E survey.
87.5.
I'm not sure where it's leading.
South and north. That's the actual home. It's on the inside lot line.
Yeah, right.
All the inside lots. Inside.
That's a direction. 87. Southeast 750 degrees east. It's a direction.
What, can I ask a question? Why didn't they originally just show the 133 feet period? Why was that additional 36 feet in the play for the houses on North Oakland?
Because... No, that's not true.
He says those were done administrative. Those were just an administrative approval. So they didn't, they just had the original lot, and the original lot was big enough to put a duplex on it.
And now they've made a deal. Now, let me ask you a question, Mr. ... In response to the chairman's question about now or later, if you don't, if you ask this applicant to wait until the new ordinance goes in, then you have no leverage to, for instance, to assist in buffering the pool.
That is correct.
I mean, they'll just be able to do what they want.
They won't even put up a fence. They put a regular chain link fence there. That is correct.
And you would have now the opportunity, if you wanted...
That is correct. And that's where, that's where...
You'd also have now the opportunity, if you wish, to take a little more land off of the proposed single-family lot.
Mm-hmm.
But if you wait, then you've got no leverage. It's up to you.
Correct. They can just walk in and take off 33 feet off of Oakland Street and automatically put it to the front and call it a day. Which we're about five weeks away from them doing it. Okay. I just wanted to understand if my logic thinking is right.
Is there a house now on that single-family proposed lot on Cherry?
There's an existing house that's intended to be replaced.
It's going to be replaced, you said?
Yes.
And it would be replaced in conformance with the bulk standards of?
The R75.
Okay. And what are the sideline, and what are the setback requirements for the R75 for a single-family home?
78 and a rear setback of 15. So the applicant at this time is providing 20 foot. So there'll be a greater rear setback today. And the applicant certainly heard the neighbor and would agree to buffer the neighbor's pool to the extent that the board felt was appropriate.
How?
Fencing and...
How cool?
Eight-foot-high fence. Well, if the board grants a variance, we can do it.
10-foot fences tend to fall down everywhere in the neighborhood. Eight-foot flush trees.
It's up to you guys. It's not just, it's not just the rear of the house. It's the side of this new lot as well. It's this whole, it's the whole corner. It's the whole, the whole, the whole...
We should have, we should have her come back in the future. This is going to be a whole...
Okay.
You're talking about also putting buffers on the North Oakland property to order...
That is correct. That is how it is. It's that whole corner. It is that, wrap it, wrap it all around.
May I muddy the waters more?
Yes, please.
If the single-family lot as proposed has a 15-foot sideline and a 10-foot sideline now, because that's what the R.75 requires. I think if you were to allow 10 and 10 for that lot, and therefore, there's only, you have 10 foot by 90, you have 5 foot by 90 feet. You've got 450 feet to play with. I think all of the lots on Cherry Street would then have a minimum of 5,000 square feet in this lot lot.
I, if you take with my little... I was drawing, I doodled a little bit.
The entire lot, the entire Cherry Street is 22,000, just over 22,000 square feet. The entire, it's broken down now to five lots. Those five lots are 22,000 square feet. If you made those, if you subdivided it into four lots, then you'd have four lots of 5,000 plus square feet. You wouldn't need any variances at all.
Well, I don't know about that. Mr. Flannery might be able to tell us better. But for instance, three of the lots, proposed lots on Cherry, are 4,700, almost 4,800, and 4,900. If you move the common lot line with proposed lot 130.02 and the single-family lot, which is 01, move it over five feet. That five times 9 is 89. It's 450 feet. If you add that 450 feet, I think...
You disperse it over the rest of them.
I think within pennies, those other three now not proposed non-conforming lots, but each do 5,000 feet.
Yeah. I was looking at that.
You worry about it. Anyway, but once again, Mr. Chairman.
I have my evidence here.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, if you don't do anything now, then you can't do anything later.
That is, that is correct. You know, and yeah, my question... I wasn't thinking about how to, I'm thinking about like, why should we make them wait? Because they can just come right back.
Right?
You know, that's my question. And then there won't be any leverage at all.
That's right.
That's the direction I was going.
That's right.
You know? Yes, it is a nuisance. It is a hazard. And same way, I refer to the rest of my board here to come up with something.
Brian, how close is that, if you were to do that?
I did the same calculation earlier, and I thought it was that you moved over 3 feet. I'm just confirming it now.
Move it over five.
If you move the line over 3 feet, then you'll have all 5,000 square feet conforming to your 7500.
No, no.
That was my calculation earlier, and I haven't been good today.
That's only 270 square feet, right? Right? It's 90 times 3, you're saying.
You sho, Brian, you shorted a total of 400 square feet to make each one 10,000. Your 99.05 and 97.02 is a total of 400 square feet.
That's only 90 times 3.
You have to double the 400 square feet.
Right?
Then this is going to be less than...
5 times 90 is 450. That way, presumably for the sake of discussion, rather than having three variances on a three-duplexed lot, you have one variance on a new single-family.
Okay, guys.
That was the chairman's idea.
Hey, here my evidence. Mr. Warren.
I, Mr. Chairman, I totally understand. You're not even in the road, and I agree.
Okay.
What did you come up with?
Four and a half feet.
Four and a half feet? Five feet. Five, yeah. Let's just do five.
Okay.
So four and a half feet would make the other three conforming if you just move it over? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And will that straighten out out of the line, straight down?
No.
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 Almost.
And it'll leave this lot with 8,000 square feet, 8,000 and 10,000.
What type of trees would you recommend that would grow high?
Arbivitis.
Arbivitis.
Arbivitis, how fit does it grow?
They grow for a year.
They're for a year? No, we want to know what height it is to begin with. Yeah, we want to put a tree, a tree to tree, and that way, 10 years it'll grow up.
Okay, so it'll forever grow.
What? Okay. Anyone else can have a motion, or can we, further comments?
Close to the public?
Yes, we close to the public.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve because I feel that widening Cherry would definitely help the area. I just want to confirm that...
By the way, if we wait for the master plan to come again, it's going to have to widen Cherry.
Right. Well, that's why I'm, I'm going to start on this. Just to confirm, as part of the overall, Cherry will be widened from Route 88 till the north lot line, not till lot number...
130.
130.01, you said. Okay. That we were going to, yes, correct.
I would go on the top of the book.
No, they don't have jurisdiction.
I'll figure it out.
And preferably to the next, pass the next lot.
What is not there?
There's going to be... We're going to widen all the lots on Cherry, that there are going to be 5,000, a minimum of 5,000 square feet, which is approximately moving the lot line to the single-family about five feet over. An eight-foot fence. Vinyl. While I was going to do trees too. An eight-foot fence between lot number 177 and the adjacent, the backyard of the single lot and coming down to the front of the house on lot number 178.04. And then the... The regular... And then trees will be... The arbivitis trees will be also between the lot of the single house and lot 177. And then they will go till the new lot line of where the backyards will go. That should cover it. And then there's going to be the standard lankery upgrades, which will be irrigation and 1/3 stone and whatever else the...
Irrigation, the front going to a thing.
Yes.
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 Irrigation, foundation plantings, and the stucco or stone. One third of the front.
Okay. I have a motion from Machineford. May I have a second, please?
Also, second Mayor, Mayor Gelli.
May I have a second, your roll call, please?
Mr. Gelli.
Thank you, yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Yes.
Mr. Nafali.
Yes.
Mr. Ribia.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Mr. Halberson.
Yes. Good night and good luck. Okay. We're going to be taking a 10-minute break. When we come back, we're going to go to Newport Estates, 3166A. Jacob Lipchitz. Jacob Lipchitz here.
Very good guy.
Is that it? No. No. Jacob Lipchitz.
Now, she's got the one just to buzz back.
446.
Here he is. Okay. We're not going to get... Yes.
I got one, I got it.
Mr. Chairman, um, one line is about, um, he has a line that he believes he's better, and he says he has a problem with the camera.
That's my question.
Okay, now.
What is this?
No, this is not. I'm glad.
No.
And, uh, Joe.
I can't call you.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I have a little one.
I have like a solo.
Yeah.
You have to take your job.
Well, more than a half.
I want to have a fifty thousand.
So, Brad, the question is optional. Why are you trying?
They don't make you work.
Right.
How should he?
No.
What's the time zip?
Yes.
I was just gonna say.
Yeah.
And let.
No.
No, no, no. This time here, oh, great. Project.
I point them to the panel.
No, but this way.
But you don't need no.
Don't worry. Don't worry. Send that to the realtor. You know, I'm serious. Name on my.
So, I did it with, I gave one story. We were out here wanting to go to the French and I'm taking rent. This is me. This is what's up.
And you went into so.
I turned to myself. I didn't know. I was. I was. I was.
I got the zoning test.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to go.
All right, I'm gonna go.
Okay, we're.
We're ready. I don't feel.
I don't feel.
If that's why. We can only have one set.
I think there's a picture.
You can't have.
You can't have.
Two lines here. You can throw more, but you gotta define. There's a.
You said.
The line.
They never did. They went to the first original site plan subdivision, right? They asked. They went for something that's.
Those were.
The heat off.
Who?
They did.
Ah, yeah.
I mean, I'm.
I mean.
I have.
No, no, no.
This time here, oh, great. Project.
I point them to the panel.
No, but this way.
But you don't need no.
Wait, wait, wait.
Don't worry. Don't worry. Send that to the realtor. You know, I'm serious. Name on my.
So, I did it with, I gave one story. We were out here wanting to go to the French and I'm taking rent. This is me.
And you went into so.
I turned to myself.
It wasn't.
It wasn't long.
I got a lot of the name.
So, welcome.
I turned to myself.
I turned to myself. I didn't know.
I was.
First.
I was.
I got the zoning test.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to go.
All right, I'm gonna go.
Okay, we're.
We're ready. I don't feel.
I don't feel.
See, that's why.
We can only have one set.
You can't have.
You can't have.
Two lines here.
Here.
You can throw more, but you gotta define.
There's a.
You said.
The line.
They never did.
They went to the first original site plan subdivision, right? They asked. They went for something that's.
Those were.
The heat off.
Who?
They did.
I called my manager.
Can I?
Can I?
Sure.
I'm sure it was.
I'm sure.
And so.
All right.
I turned to myself. I didn't know.
I was.
I was.
First.
I was.
I was.
I got the zoning test.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to go.
We have to go.
All right, I'm gonna go.
Okay, we're.
We're ready. I don't feel.
I don't feel.
See, that's why.
We can only have one set.
You can't have.
You can't have.
Two lines here.
Here.
You can throw more, but you gotta define.
There's a.
You said.
The line.
They never did.
They went to the first original site plan subdivision, right? They asked. They went for something that's.
Those were.
The heat off.
Who?
They did.
I called my manager.
What do you say?
No, no.
Can I?
Can I?
Can I?
Oh, my.
That's the.
That's the.
That's the.
So, what time is the break? Is that it?
We've got a day.
We're supposed to have a research.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who's here?
Okay. Brian. I think we continue. I see a color rendering. Can I see you for a second?
Yes. We're. We're. This is.
Okay. Brian. Before we continue, I see a color rendering. Can I see you for a second?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't get it.
I wasn't.
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 But that's why.
That's.
I'm sure.
Right, right.
I know.
We all do.
We got there with.
That's.
I noticed.
And the last.
This thing.
Of course, you.
Yeah.
I have.
I have.
I have.
So, what time is the break? Is that it?
We've got a day.
We're supposed to have a research.
Yeah.
Okay. Who's here?
Okay.
The break?
Yeah.
Okay. Brian. I think we continue. I see a color rendering. Can I see you for a second?
Yes. I don't get it.
I wasn't.
I wasn't.
I wasn't.
I don't get it.
I wasn't.
I don't.
Okay. Who's here?
Okay.
The break?
Yeah.
Okay. Brian. I think we continue. I see a color rendering. Can I see you for a second?
Yes. We're.
Okay. Brian. I think we continue. I see a color rendering. Can I see you for a second?
Yes. I don't get it.
I wasn't.
I wasn't.
I wasn't.
I don't.
I wasn't.
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 Yes, do I want to see a color rendering of, of what was.
Cut it here. Your plan understands it now six members here, right?
Yes. But we're. We're. This is. Uh, we're. Usually. Um, sorry. It comes from the. Site. But we're. We're. We're.
Okay. Guys, we're ready though? Okay, we can try to continue.
Appeal number three nine six six A. Newport Estates.
Um, I think we're gonna do both. Read them both to the record because they're both very similar. Both same owner. Um, different owners, sorry, different owners.
No, they're different.
But it's the same part of the same, um, um.
Same.
Same street, same thing. Bifurcated, um, site plan.
Two twenty Newport Avenue, block four ninety six, lot two, R forty zone. To subdivide and create twelve single family lots. On Terry Boat Engineer Plan, September twenty first, twenty seventeen. The applicant's, applicant has previously requested and obtained a bifurcated use density variance in accordance with R fifteen Single Family Residential Zone Standards under Board Resolution Number Three Nine Six Six memorialized on October twenty ninth, twenty sixteen. The applicant is requesting preliminary and final major subdivision approval to subdivide existing Lot Two in Block Four ninety eight and create thirteen lots. Twelve of the new lots are proposed as single family residential lots. Thirteenth Lot is proposed as a stormwater basin lot dedicated to Lakewood Township. The new lots are proposed as Lots Two Point Oh One through Two Point Thirteen. This is consistent with the use variance approval. Appeal number Three Nine Six Six B Bellevue Estates, Two Thirteen and Two Fifty Three Newport Avenue and Eight Fifty Bellevue Avenue, Block Four Nine Eight, Lot One and Ten, and Block Five Oh One, Lot One Point Oh One in the R forty zone. Subdivided property to create thirteen single family lots in accordance with the R fifteen zone. From Terry Boat Engineer Plan, the applicant has previously requested and obtained a bifurcated use density variance in accordance with R fifteen Single Family Residential Zone Standards under Board Resolution Number Three Nine Six Six memorialized on October, August twenty ninth, twenty sixteen. The applicant is requesting preliminary and final major subdivision approval to subdivide existing Lot Two in Blocks One Ninety Eight and create thirteen lots. All of the new lots are proposed as single family residential lots. New single family dwellings are proposed for Lots One Point Oh One through One Point Eleven and One Point Thirteen. An existing two-story dwelling is to remain on new Lot One Point Twelve. The new lots are proposed as Lots One Point Oh One through One Point Thirteen. This is consistent with the use variance approval.
Did you share, uh, have a ticket on the app?
Before you continue, I just wanna make an announcement, okay? You realize that we have six members here and you okay to move forward?
Yes.
Okay. At the same time, I just wanna tell my fellow members that we're gonna be listening to two applications at once because it's very similar and exactly identical in nature, which is, um, appeal number Three Nine Six Six A Newport Estates and Three Nine Six Six B Bellevue Estates is an original, originally part of the same use variance. Okay, we're just split up as two different owners, so we're gonna hear it all together. But at the end, we're gonna need two separate votes, one for each. So, when you have any issues with each one, just remember the mechanism that you can change it on each over twenty one, but keep, keep it separate in the discussion. Um, I'm sorry, you can make one discussion about both applications, but keep it separate on your vote with any adjustments you want to each one.
As we go forward, as we go through our testimony, because here are the two of whom I work in and, uh.
Correct.
This time again, total mark, we have four exhibits. Uh, one for both, the A and the B application of A one, three, four, and five. I'll drop it. I don't.
Line, career, or firm, fill the whole group together.
I do. Mike Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. Uh, four exhibits. A one is a color rendering of a combined, uh, map showing the, uh, both projects together. A two is a tax map, and I, uh, highlighted Newport Estates in orange and Bellevue Estates in pink. And then A three is the, uh, the site plan for, uh, Newport Estates. We, the layout for Newport Estates. And A four is the layout for Bellevue Estates.
Brian, do you have my page? Do you, uh, do you?
Yes, as indicated, these are, uh, the subdivision applications following bifurcated use application. Uh, the, the, the board is probably where the master plan of two thousand seventeen adopted showed this area as R twelve, so these lots will be exceeding the, uh, the future master plan. But the applicant, the applicant is coming in, uh, proposing a, a very nice subdivision in this area. It's a, an area, uh, that has, uh, developed with, you know, nice large homes and a state area, and, and these lots accordingly will fit into the character of that neighborhood. Looking at, uh, the board engineer's report for Newport Estates, uh, from September twenty first, uh, it, it indicates the, the nature of the lot, uh, which is a thirteen lot subdivision, one of which is stormwater management, and twelve residential lots. Uh, it, it, as indicated in the zone, the use variance has been granted for R fifteen, uh, Single Family Residential Design Standards. Uh, no gold variance were requested. Uh, uh, there, there is an issue on proposed lots Two Point Eleven, Twelve, and Thirteen. Those are in the report, and those are the ones that back up Dory Avenue. And the engineer's report, uh, calls them out as through lots, uh, indicating that its through lot would need two frontages. Uh, if you look at the definition, the ordinance through lots, it says residential lots located on through lots were practical, have access from lower road frontage. All units shall be oriented so the front of the unit is toward the same frontages of the majority of units in the existing neighborhood. Now, I, I could refer to these as reverse frontage lots, which is also defined in the ordinance, and, and it's more than a through lot because Dory Avenue's never going anywhere. It's a short paper street. The reverse frontage lot is defined in the ordinance as a lot which fronts on two parallel streets and is not accessible from one of the parallel streets. So, this is certainly not accessible from Dory Avenue, and then in the case, you get one front yard and one rear yard.
Just the fact that you said that Dory Avenue, the paper street's not going anywhere. There's nothing there now, or to the other side of Dory Avenue?
Dory Avenue is approved, uh, to the east. This portion of Dory Avenue that bunches this property is unapproved, uh, and my opinion is it's gonna remain unapproved forever because it terminates at the municipal boundary line.
Yeah, but somebody could improve it and put another house on the other side.
The other side is in Jackson, which is an industrial zone. Uh, so, first of all, Jackson doesn't want people from Lakewood to be able to come in, so they're not gonna be in favor of that.
I understand, but, but if somebody wants to finish Dory Avenue and put in a house right in.
There's a tri, there's a triangular piece that, that's there, uh, that's owned by the township. This little triangle?
Yeah.
Owned by the township.
Lakewood Township?
Lakewood Township.
So, is, you mean to say there's a triangle right over here?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so there's no house ever gonna go back in there?
No, I, it's not, uh, unless something changes.
Are they gonna try and lose that?
It's a very small. It's, uh, uh. But, and, and that has, that would have frontage.
How big is it?
How big is it?
How big is it?
That's a question.
Uh. Two hundred by two hundred, so it could be about five thousand square feet.
To build a lot.
So, it's a lot. Sorry, that's why I don't actually answer and answer in a, in a Dory Avenue or.
That frontage on a paper street.
Yeah, 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 that's my comment.
First of all, you have a half setback, so you have a front setback and a rear setback. You're gonna end up with, uh, an unbuildable triangle that somebody could come in and ask for. But the order to come in, they have to buy it through the township. So, the township.
And it's.
And it's.
Little street.
And it's a little street. So, they can put up a house like, um, the one that has it due so eloquently, uh, designed, uh, put up Swan Commandu and Caddie Street. Do you know the triangle? It's no, put anything ever. You know, Swan Command, Caddie?
Yeah.
I know. As you said, you're right. So, I'm trying to come up with something that.
But was that lot owned by the township? No, it's locked in the house.
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm hypothetical that. So, if the township had owned it by five bucks, could it land like? The government, I finished Dory Avenue for four hundred thousand dollars?
I put more face in than nobody bought it yet, but I, uh, what I was getting to the point in my testimony was.
Good.
Call it, whatever you wanna call it, if you say it needs variance, we have the proofs for the variance, and, and I'll be happy to, you know, the, the, uh, benefits out with the detriment, so to see two variants, and I'll go through with that.
Liquidity's happening.
Well, we certainly have all these same criteria in the two thousand seven master plan, uh, on.
Two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen master plan.
I think seven.
He did.
Yes.
No, we're.
Okay, go ahead. Next.
Uh, so, that, that's the, uh, variant that's pointed out by your engineer, that he says we need, my testimony is that, uh, the land, as we shown, uh, it would more be the criteria of the, uh, reverse frontage lot, but it's a board determines the variance. If neither of us request that variance, it's a C two variance. The, uh, master plan.
How far is the property one from the back of the porch? From the back of the house?
Twenty feet.
Okay, so there's no reason why we shouldn't have that a little bit and put it in the twenty feet or, or whatever we need. Okay, go ahead.
Um.
Okay. What do you think, guys?
Right.
By the way, um, Brian, these houses that you're laying out over here are not the actual houses that are being built.
That is correct. These will all.
Because you don't want to touch them, build houses. People are gonna buy these separate lots and build whatever, however they want.
Yes.
So, this is just your rough drawing that you're laying out?
Yes.
For this, for, for discussion purposes?
It's anticipated this, this would be a state zone similar to the one that the esteemed chairman referred to, uh.
My mom is wonderful, right?
Yes.
Right.
Yes. Um.
Right here?
Yes. Um, so, as indicated on page three of the report with respect to this, uh, uh, the board end here indicates that we proposed a twenty foot setback. He's indicating we need a thirty foot setback. We're requesting those variances, um, the, uh.
What?
This, we feel you don't need the variance. The engineer's pointed out.
We're, we're proposing twenty. The engineer's pointing out that he feels we need thirty. We're asking.
Oh, I thought you said ten feet.
To have twenty instead of thirty.
I thought you said we needed ten feet. That's what I used to be bored, ten feet for the front. Twenty feet for front.
Twenty.
You're going to.
Front yard or back yard?
It's two streets.
Okay.
Fine, it's fine, it's two streets.
If one lot actually has three frontages, it's on the new cul-de-sac. It's, it's, has a side on Bellevue, and then the rear may go.
This is a big tree.
You're not listening.
What'd you say?
You're not listening.
Oh, there's nothing.
He knows what I'm gonna say.
Right.
What's the name of the street in that cul-de-sac that's there now?
Proposed, proposed court.
I, 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 I think that's the, uh.
That's gonna be, um, Franny Way.
Franny Way.
Franny Way.
Proposed, you proposed court.
I, 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 I think that's the, uh.
That's gonna be, um, Franny Way. Franny Way. Fr- Franny Way. I could open one.
Obi-Wan.
What is trying to say?
Okay.
Those three lots on top have two frontages, front on Dorie and front on that one. The one on Dorie is not considered a frontage, there's no access, it's considered a rear yard setback. Because I would issue a six-foot fence across that whole back, and it's not a front.
I, I understand what you're saying. I was only questioning if they can ever finish Dorie Street over there and create a front.
Yes, but even if they do, it's still a through, through street.
So you, so you don't have to consider, you tell me, you don't have to.
It's not just one, it's just better.
You don't have to consider it a front?
Correct.
Okay.
Twenty, it's a rear setback which is only feet.
Which is twenty feet.
Right, the ordinance says for a reverse frontage lot, uh, where it has two parallel streets, which we have, reverse frontage lot shall have one front yard and one rear yard and two side yard setbacks. In this case, we're gonna have one front yard, one rear yard, one side yard, and another front yard.
So the one in the side is, um.
The one in the corner one.
On the corner, the corner one, as soon as these two are, are.
Okay.
Straight out.
Okay.
And we didn't think we need a variance, if you feel we need a variance, and I don't think you do.
Now, the corner one, I'm looking at the question really, the, the front one, in case somebody ever wants to finish Dorie Street. But the, the, the one in the corner for sure doesn't, the one inside, you're not gonna get anything in there anyway. So maybe somebody just wants to cut in Dorie Street and, and really buy the passage triangle and put in something in there, so you'll need a little bit of frontage in there.
There's, there's a lot of people who want to buy the triangle, it's a question of the town itself.
Yeah, but, but, but right now, as Franny just said, that it's called a through street and you don't comply with it.
I, I never had access to it.
But, next, move on.
Just, just to be clear, it's called a reverse frontage lot.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, uh, the other questions in the report, we would certainly comply with, uh, what, what the engineer wanted. Uh, if, if you're agreeing with us that we don't need variance on that, then I don't have to go through NJSA 4455D2 and all that stuff. Uh, Newport Estates, which is the, uh, application, um, to the south, uh, is a thirteen lot, uh, application. And, um, there we are asking for, uh, minimum lot width relief. Uh, lots one point oh two to one point eleven and one point thirteen, we have widths ranging from eighty feet to ninety-five feet, whereas a hundred feet is required. Uh, and you can see that the nature of, and the geometry of the property, they're all beautiful, large, you lots for the area. Uh, but trying to maintain the senior residence, which at some point will probably be a historic structure, uh, and, and then all the other houses in around that, um, we're, we're asking for that variance relief. Uh, we're also asking for minimum front yard, uh, on lots one point oh one and one point oh eight. And those, those are corner lots of twenty-five feet with thirty feet required.
Where was that, where was that?
One point oh one and one point oh eight.
How did you find?
One point oh one, one point oh eight.
Yeah.
And here, the twenty-five feet is just to the corner of a building, because the lot isn't, uh, the two lines aren't parallel. Here it's just the side, uh.
Okay.
So, uh, certainly, I, I think, and of course with the master plan, the new two thousand and seventeen master plan on page two, where it says we should comply housing, uh, page seven, where it says we should encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. And then the, uh, the Spillandius Law NJAC 4455D2, under the purpose of the act, we encourage misselection, guided peruse of development, all in the state manner, which will promote public health, safety, moral, and general welfare, uh, and to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities. The population density here would be less than what's proposed in the new two thousand and seventeen master plan. All of these variances would be C-two variances, or C-one variances, where the, the corner lots, it's the nature of the corner lots. Uh, and the C-two variances are the benefits out there.
Well, we read, uh, all that comments.
Yeah, one second, honey. Go ahead, go ahead, I'm, I'm there, I'm pointing something over here, but go ahead.
Brian, is it all, uh, C-two or C-one?
No, it's, uh, well-inseptic right now, certainly the applicant, uh, the board acts favorably on the application, would meet with the, uh, New Jersey American who has the franchise in the area and see what the likelihood of bringing in sewer water. I, I would think that with the development that's there, and, and I know for a fact that New Jersey American hired F W A associates to look at this area for providing sewer water. So certainly it's in the applicant's best interest, it's in New Jersey American, but on fifteen thousand square feet, you can comfortably fit a well-inseptic.
If someone went up fifteen thousand.
Yeah, there are minimums of fifteen thousand.
Okay, do you need one more second?
And got, and of course, it all leads to Cross Street, right? That's, no, no, no other way in and out, it'll all go to Cross Street.
Currently, there's no other way in and out, they're, there's probably, uh, an availability at some point in the future, uh, if the area develops. Dorie, Dorie Court, for example, uh, could be extended. Currently, there's a school there, um, you know, there, there's a potential. Uh, we all know the school, it's, it's an old house and, and a bunch of trailers, so there's nothing really in the way of, uh, making that connection.
Okay. Um, I'm just trying to jog my memory on this, uh, use variance over here. You say that Newport Avenue, wide Newport Avenue, all the way down to Cross, so that, um, we could have a nice traffic flow coming in and out? Does anyone remember that?
I don't recall that in the resolution.
We had that discussion. So, so I'm reading over here, um, Newport, uh, the district office of Newport Avenue is right now, if, if, uh, if approved, the roadway will need to be widened in order to accommodate the new traffic. Okay?
But, and, and that's referring to our section of Newport, which we are widening, and, and all across the front end we're widening.
Something like, somebody is, because it's, the, this is not gonna work. Our member was speaking about this, that they're coming out of Newport Avenue on Cross Street, where all the traffic's gonna come, we want to put in, um, um, helping guys, do you remember something like that? What? Did anyone remember something? That was, um, like, well, that's okay, fine. I'm gonna, that's the next. Um, and then we're gonna put sidewalks all around, right?
But certainly we're, we're putting sidewalks on all our frontage.
Yeah, I understand that only a frontage.
Right.
But, um, so you're gonna put on Newport, on, um, on Bellevue, um, whatever, on, on, on.
On, on Howard Stand Court.
What? Um, well, under proposed court, all that is gonna get sidewalks all around.
Again, correct.
Yeah.
Lighting.
Um, 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 but, but, I'm still, in my mind, I'm still stuck on that, one thing that we're gonna put, uh, Newport Estates is gonna be wide all the way down to the corner.
What I do remember from the first meeting was that the room was full of people who didn't want this. Uh, and they've all gotten the, the same notices, but the, they understand how.
That's not my question. But.
I, I don't recall anything in the resolution, they're.
Okay, so does anyone recall any something over there?
I remember.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's give it a few minutes, maybe, maybe people are gonna remember. Next, help me out over here. How this is going to work. I see that we have here, uh, a lot line, and then we have approximately, um, eighteen feet of township property, and then the sidewalk, and then the road, and light poles, and, and poles in the middle?
Yeah.
What's the story with this, um, township property to the lot line? Why can't we just put the road right up against like, like we normally do? The road, the sidewalk, the curb, I'm sorry, the, the side, the sidewalk, the grass, the curb, the blacktop, and so on, and make it a boulevard, make it nice and wide. What is this, um, township property, who owns it, who's responsible for it, how's it gonna work?
There's a seventy-five foot right-of-way here, uh, which is a, a very large and unusual right-of-way. The utility poles.
Right-of-way right now, we make, you're making a seventy-five.
No, I'm not, no, there is a seventy-five.
There is a seventy-five right-of-way?
Yeah. Uh, and, and the roadway that was put in, and the utility poles that were put in, were down the middle, so when I look at this, I think this is gonna be a very nice area, there's gonna be.
So, so here's my question, leave, leave a nice island by the poles in the middle, and just put, um, northeast one side, is it northeast? Or east-west? On one side of the poles, um, east-west on the other side of the poles.
Can I show them what my client's, explain a little better what the issue is?
Yeah, fine, I'm just looking at it like that, what's going on over there, I see poles, I see township property, before you, before you explain to the, Terry, um, Terry, let me ask your legal opinion. If, if this, these poles I hear in the middle, and there's seven, and there's eighteen feet of township property before the property line, first of all, where's the sidewalk going, where do you put the sidewalk? Second of all, who is responsible on it, and, and, and how does this work in reference to insurance, uh, maintenance of that piece, you know?
Well, the, uh, the right-of-way in front of your property, you're always responsible for maintaining, so every property owner is gonna have to maintain the property. What's that?
Where do the curb and sidewalks go?
The curb, the curb and sidewalk, everything is the same, except there's eighteen foot of township property, more than you usually actually. Uh, you remember in our last application where we had an easement, so the.
Is that eighteen feet, um, open, paved?
No, no, it's eighteen feet of trees, grass.
So then where's the curbs going?
The curbs are going eighteen feet from the property line. Uh, normally the curb, the curb is eighteen feet from the property line, now it's gonna be, uh, twenty feet from the property line, which doesn't create any problems. It, it, it's actually gonna look nice, it's an area that needs to be maintained, but it's maintained by all the property owners along there.
So, 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 so help me out a minute, you're gonna have blacktop?
Yes.
You're gonna have a curb?
Yes.
You're gonna have two feet of grass?
A grass, a grass strip with poles in it.
A grassy with poles in it?
Sidewalk on the other side of it.
Four feet of sidewalk?
Yes.
And then, and then ten feet of no man's land?
Well, it's not no man's land, it, it's, it's part of the right-of-way, which is maintained by the property owners. It's, we could ask the township to vacate that and move the line in, but there was no reason to do that, the lots are already huge already. This is the reverse of where we come in and say, can we do it in an easement, because we don't wanna give the land away.
I, I understand, but my question is le- legally, le- legally, and that's our.
I'm, I'm, I'm giving you my legal opinion, that they're maintaining, just, just like they have to shovel the snow on their sidewalk?
Yeah.
Whether, whether it's eight feet that they're maintaining, or twenty-eight feet that they're maintaining, it's the same, it's the same requirement.
How is this gonna work, I mean, technically speaking, the township loses control of this eight feet, because, I don't know, something doesn't, something doesn't. Okay, one hand, one hand from the other, or whoever it is. Just explain a little better. Let's see, I wanna hear, I wanna hear.
Ewodai Ichor, last name is spelled E-I-C-H-O-R-N. Okay, so just, yeah, just wanna give a little background of why we came up with this plan, this is actually all.
I mean, I have a problem with that, are you a problem with it?
Yeah, no, it's intense, then. Uh, this is actually based on, we had a couple of these with township engineering department, and this actually is costing us a lot more money, because that was their opinion, uh, in a way to enhance the whole neighborhood. What we're actually doing over here is, is to order to line, if you drive down Newport today, you don't see that, you drive down a regular road until you get to Bellevue, and then all of a sudden, it looks like a little pathway that almost runs into the forest and kind of goes like this.
You got me confused when I drove it the other day, because I saw, hey.
Cause all of a sudden, where are you going?
Where am I going, correct.
So, the township said, how about we line up Newport, and if you see the way the curb cuts are designed now, is that we're actually gonna continue Newport, Newport straight down, so what we're doing is, we're actually ripping out the whole old road, and we're, but, but we're building, we're not just extending the road, we're actually building a brand-new road from beginning from scratch. What we're doing is, right now, the road goes down Newport, and let's say the, let's say the electric, electric on poles, the wires, on the left side of the road. All of a sudden, the road crosses those today, it's just being, it's, it crosses, and then all of a sudden, the little pathway road ends up on the left side of those poles. But we're, what the township suggests that we do is, keep the road straight down on the right side of the poles, and build a brand-new road on the right side of the poles, which we have enough room for, and we're building a brand-new fifty-foot right-of-way on the right side of the poles, in order to be able to maintain a normal condition where the buses go straight down the road, as opposed to having to veer left on the other side of the poles, and then somehow end up on the left side somewhere. So the idea is, that we're building straight down Newport, and we're kind of setting it up where people, the buses can go straight down the road, not have to kind of merge into someone else's property where it kind of shits off, and this way they turn at the end, which we also created a beautiful little cul-de-sac and a little island in the middle, I don't know what you call that, but the concept was, is that the people in the neighborhood wanted. What do they call it? Around the bend, where they, that concept is, it gives the buses, um, the flow, where the buses kind of turn around and have a nice, easy turn. We're hoping that this way the buses will have an easy time coming in and coming back out.
That's, that's fine. I, I, I got, I got the logic, and just how you got to this, but I, we, I, I physically drove down the street on Sunday yesterday.
And it's very confusing.
To know what's going on, to get, get myself familiarized.
Now, today, if you drive down the road, you would actually go straight down, you wouldn't have to veer off to the left.
I was even looking for this fence over here for the gate, where it says over here, there's a gate, but there's no gate yet.
What gate of community? But over here, the concept is you're driving straight down, and then we have a full thirty-two foot wide road on the right side of those poles, and we have sidewalk, curb throughout the whole road, and it's gonna be a brand-new road from scratch.
That's fine, it's beautiful, but, but I just wanna understand in legal language, normally you have blacktop, curb, grass, sidewalk, property line.
Right, so, like, for example.
Here, here it's gonna be blacktop, curb, sidewalk.
Like we have in many places in town, like, for example, on John Street, I'll give you a perfect example.
John Street.
John Street's a road that has a seventy-five foot right-of-way.
Yeah.
But the road is only fifty feet wide.
The blacktop.
Not even, but, but the whole right-of, with the whole, the blacktop is a lot less than that. What happens is, we created sidewalk, curb, and everything on township right-of-way, and now what happens is, the houses look set back a lot further than they typically would, is because the first ten feet of grass technically is part of the township right-of-way, but the homeowner maintains, and who, and same, the same thing applies also with the actual driveway, you end up having a curb cut in the middle of the right-of-way, and that driveway goes up on the township right-of-way, but technically is maintained, and everything is maintained as if it's a private owner.
So help me out, so when did the township, when, when, why is A block over here, is, the owners and responsibility of this piece now belongs to this homeowner? Not anymore to the township? So if somebody slips and cracks his head open, or after the breaks a leg, which I've done on the sidewalk, how's your sidewalk?
It's the same way with every sidewalk, that person has in front of his property, I'm not mistaken, I guess you gotta talk to the attorney.
This is regular, uh.
But the homeowner isn't responsible to maintain it, correct?
This is strictly homeowners? Are you understanding that correctly?
I, I, I did follow half of that, let me just ask a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Newport Avenue is now seventy-five foot right-of-way. Yes?
Yes.
And generally speaking, the, this, the lights are in the middle of the right-of-way. More or less, right? You're gonna pave thirty-two feet wide, brand-new, and that's gonna be just, yes, and that's generally gonna be from the, not quite, but where the lights are now, to the front of the lots you're developing.
Correct, on the west side of the poles.
All right, okay.
Let me show you, do you need more?
Yes, west side, yes, I got it.
As opposed to where the dri, as opposed to where the road is today, which is on the east side of the.
Is the road today on?
Somebody drove, that they know what you're talking about, right, and it's pretty complicated, you're driving here.
Is the road today? Is the road today on the east side of the?
Correct.
And what's gonna happen to the east side of the lights when this is all done?
We're beside, we're gonna have, it's gonna be part of the property, which means not part of the ownership of the property, but it's gonna be part of the right-of-way, but it's gonna be ceded as if it's a regular front lawn.
Okay, and there's existing meandering sidewalk on that side now?
Correct, well, right now, there's actually no sidewalk at all.
Well, what is it?
That's actually, that's the road, it looks like a sidewalk, it's almost the same size as a sidewalk. You wouldn't realize it's not, it, it doesn't look like a road, but.
All right, so who's gonna build that sidewalk on the east side of the lights?
We are.
Yeah. They, they'll work it out, but a- anybody that lives there is gonna need a road in sight.
So before any building permits are issued, or before any site grid, somebody's gonna.
Before COs, before COs.
Let me finish the question. Before any building permits or site improvements, somebody's gonna post a performance bond to guarantee the construction of that.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Usually, usually with filing the map, the performance bond is posted.
Okay, thank you.
So, Jerry, what, 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 that's what we're here for now, is that actually correct, that you can have, um, the way they described it, a road, and then an extra eighteen feet on the other side of the sidewalk, which is no man's land?
It's a big, it's a big right-of-way area, but yeah.
You could do that?
Sure. I mean, it's, that's very large.
Right.
But it's the same general concept as having an eight-foot right-of-way, it, but it's eighteen feet or whatever.
Well, wouldn't it be nicer if you put, if you put a line, an island down by the poles, and put the roads on each side of that island, and leave the poles in the middle?
And then what, what would you pave?
Two sides.
Both sides?
Both sides.
So rather than thirty-two feet.
At an island?
That, that would be a traffic hazard, because somebody that.
But then, but then you're paving, not thirty-two feet, you're paving sixty feet.
No, each one has to be thirty-two feet, each one is eighteen feet. What? Like an island, a boulevard style.
To, to me, it's a traffic hazard having the poles in the middle, there's somebody coming down, sees pavement on the other side, veers over there, hits a pole.
I see Emily Lake, which is the way that, and, and, it's never looked like this is the way that.
This, this is gonna look like a normal residential road, but it's gonna look like the houses are all set back an extra ten or fifteen feet. It's gonna look beautiful, everybody should do that, it's the reverse of, Jerry Street where the houses are gonna look closer? Here, they're gonna look further set back.
We can give you a, a sales pitch, get eight feet free. Eight by seventy-five.
An, an, an extra ten feet to maintain.
We'll do so. All right, listen, I'm gonna leave that, I brought this up, you guys, who want this further, go ahead. Uh, if you don't want this further, so be it.
Again, this was a conjunction with the town.
Okay. Okay, um, yes, I, I, I think for now, I'm done, let me hear what others have to say.
I see that, because you have tremendous front yards and much more backyard, rear yards, all right? Is that because of, it's designed now because you have a septic, that you're taking into account that you have a septic?
Well, the, what's shown on here is, is typical, uh, each lot is gonna be custom, it's gonna be a state zone, so if somebody comes in and wants to do a septic in the rear yard, or something different, that, that can all change. This was shown, soils work was done to show that septics would work, that's what's shown, that septics can work.
Would you reverse, you could put septic in the back and.
Yes, yes.
My question was, they make it water, I'm thinking of water.
Well, I, I, I know the area very well, because I live nearby, we've done a lot of applications in the area, there's not a water table problem here, so to me, the septics would fit anywhere, uh, the, uh, Sermon's office who did it, did soils work to show that the septics where they're done will work.
And the resolution, the prior resolution required them to make a good faith effort to speak with NJAW for sewer water anyway, so I'm sure they could provide a.
Yeah, but this, this, this well force or water?
Well, so, it's shown that, it works with well and septic, there's, there's no reason in the world that public water won't come in. New Jersey American wants to bring public water in, and public water works easy, the sewer is a different story, the sewer is further away, and there's some deep cuts and stuff, so that's gotta be worked out. Right.
Plenty, there's plenty of root for them all, or where, however you want to, that's not a problem, okay. Um, any other questions, anyone? Seeing none, we'll open to the public, anyone in the public who wanna be heard, please step up.
We're opening on both.
Yeah, we're discussing both right now.
Mr. Flann, you ready to write answer, or do you affirm to tell the whole person?
I affirm. I have a question, I hope you're not starting the four minutes, I didn't see you starting with anybody else for the four minutes today. But I'll make a choice. I'll do a favor. Um, you said before that the new master plan is basically saying that this could be a R-12, and you're only proposing a R-15, you're like a big topic. Now, I was looking at it, actually, not even on the title of the application, I was looking at, I don't remember any developer in the neighborhood being big topic and to propose less, when they could build more, so I wonder, where is the niche? What are we missing? Nobody's.
You're looking to give force in the mouth.
I, I, I'm always amazed at Mr. Klein, because he gets up and he, he talks about applications, but he doesn't object, and, and now he's so cynical that somebody's doing an application with nicer lots, I, I, I don't know that answer.
You don't have an answer on that?
The requirement, Mr. Klein, from the prior use approvals, was that the lots have to conform to the R-15 zone requirements. Some of these lots, as we sit here today, don't conform with the R-15, but if the master plan recommendations go through, this will be an R-12 zone, and they will comply, right, Mr. Klein?
So they could go to the.
Is that right?
Right?
Yes.
So they could technically go to the planning board next month and get a byright application?
Yes.
They don't need to use the zoning board and get R-12s and put in another two lots, and it looks like he has no explanation why his client is so stupid and not doing that.
See, see, lots are gonna be nice, and they're gonna sell for more, you, you don't always make more money by having more lots. I think you've told me that in the past.
I guess I'm smarter, I guess I'm smarter than anybody in the room over here, and let me explain to you why he's not so stupid, or why he doesn't wanna do that. According to the R-12 standards that the master plan just approved, there's one condition, and the condition is that you have to improve widening Cross Street, there are not a few streets over there, I don't know, is this next to Cross Street somewhere? No idea.
Where's Cross Street?
Where's Cross Street related to this application?
Thousands of feet away.
Thousands of feet away, but, but the end of the game is, these lots, the. These lots that was recommended by the planning board, master plan, that do R-12, is subject to some road improvements, and until that road improvements doesn't get done, he cannot go for byright application for the zoning board. So it's rather for him to come to the zoning board, I'm sorry, planning board, come to the zoning board, claim that he's a big topic, when he's not such a big topic, because he's not getting it through the planning board, because he needs that, the zone only changes when the road gets improved. Talking about Cross Street, Misses, Misses, Pine Street, they put a lot of conditions, mine, all that. Did anybody realize that? I'm just, I'm just, I saw it, I actually told somebody to mention it, that one of the planning board members, to see if he captured it, he didn't capture it, they had to explain it. Then am I saying something that makes sense over here? Cause I, 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 I really, Brian, does it make sense what I'm telling you, that decline?
Well, again, you, you have a cynical nature, this was an application that the, the applicant started years ago, before there was a master plan. This was submitted before there was a master plan, based on a bifurcated use application, he has a product he likes, he could wait, get more lots, pay more for impact fees, he, he will pay any impact fees, if the township adopts impact fees, he'll pay his impact fees, it is, uh, I, I, I always thought the client was a zonist, I, I never knew what one was before, but I think he, the applicant is.
Let me just finish up with the, the impact fees, there was, like I mentioned in the master plan, they were talking about the impact fees. But as the ordinance states now, when they're passing it in the township committee, the way they wanna pass it, there's no impact fees. They might do it in the future, two years down the road, but he could come next month, apply for an application for the master plan, I'm just bringing it out, I know he has a bifurcated application, I'm not stupid, I know that he has the R-15 zone without the road improvements, and that's the reason, but he's coming like he's a big topic, and he wants to make the density less, that's not so, ay, 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 he could go, he can't get it R-12 and a byright application through the planning board, he could only do it because he kept it on already, I'm sorry for my English, he, from the, from the zoning board has bifurcated, that he got already the R-12.
Thank you, Mr. Flann.
Did, did everybody get it, or I have to explain myself again?
No, no, Zoder, you're the fourth one.
Okay.
Just one more question. Dorie Avenue, does he have to ask for a, um, design waiver for improving that road? Because I didn't hear it from, they repeated this, but it's been in your report.
Design improving Dorie Avenue.
Again, the, the rule is, that anytime you have roads surrounding the property, even though it's not, you don't use that frontage, by ordinance, you have to put in that road, you could ask for a waiver, that's what they do. You could ask for a waiver, that's what they do with the planning board, and that's what they do with the zoning board. My question is, is he required to ask, you don't have to answer me because you're not the applicant, but I'm just asking as per as he, does he have to put in that road and he's asking for a waiver, or he's not asking for a waiver?
You're asking my opinion?
Yes.
He, he should technically be requesting a design waiver from improving Doria Avenue, even though it goes nowhere.
So you understand where my second thought is, I know Brian is going to like, boom, boom, but as far as engineering report, it should have been, could be it is, but it should have been in the engineering report, that he should, it should, he's by, technically by township ordinance, required to improve that road. But I didn't understand before, they were saying is, he doesn't have to put in sidewalks, it's no frontage, if by ordinance, and this is to you, Francine, by ordinance, if he had to improve that road, you have no right to call it not a frontage, because there's a road over there. If there would have been a road, would have that be, be able to put a six-foot fence by the end of the property?
Yes, because he better definition to the, the, because frontage.
If, even if there...
No access.
If there would have been an access?
You can't have access to fronts, then you'd have two fronts.
Right, so if by ordinance, he has to put in a road, that would just the professional, I'm sorry, I'm taking my time, a, a drop, but I'm finishing up with this. If by ordinance, he's required to put in that road, and he's, needs to ask for a waiver, if he doesn't get that waiver, he needs to put in that road, that means as he does have frontage, that means as he's required to put in sidewalks, so he has to ask the sidewalk in a curb waiver too, that he's not such a big topic in that either.
Okay, since right in the review letter, design...
Maybe it is in the review letter. And we, I said we would comply with everything in the review letter, we specifically went through this earlier.
I didn't, I, I heard that you're asking for a waiver.
We indicated, we, it's in the letter, and we would agree to everything in the report. In the report, it says, design waivers are necessary, and we said yes.
On the report?
Okay, so this is where the question is.
It says it by...
So if by ordinance, if they don't get that waiver, are they required to have the normal setbacks? I, I don't wanna cross-examine you, I'm sorry, I'll do it tomorrow on the phone. Just, I'm just bringing, I'm, I'm just bringing out a point over here. The reason why Lakewood traffic got messed up, one was it was the township committee's fault, for getting all these streets vacated, and some of it isn't this, next to these properties over here full of vacations. Anybody that is close to anybody, even today they're vacating streets because there's no owners of the property, they're close, there's some committee members and all that, but that's not your problem. The second problem why the, 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 the roads got messed up is, because they got the road waivers. And it wasn't the report, that's what he claims, but it was not even brought up. Listen, the shy of you is that we're giving another road waiver to mess up our traffic again. That's the point that I wanna bring up, is that, give them another house, give them another, give them R-12, but don't mess up our roads. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wanna be heard? Seeing none, we'll close to the public.
That was a great lesson, what this application is not. We, we came back and put the board, a year ago, much over a year ago, um, with this application as a bifurcated application. We came R-15, we've come back, we believe we designed the plan, not only that we just listened to what the zoning board wanted, we met with the township engineers, we're working with the township to make sure it's the best layout, uh, for the property.
Okay. Uh, final comments and a motion from the board? We need, we need, by the way, we need two motions, we need two votes.
Just, I don't, I don't agree with that, but just explain exactly again, how does it work out with the layout? It's a paper road, and therefore, you don't need any, you don't need to ask?
Well, my opinion is, uh, and, and, and we went through this, is it a through street or is it a reverse frontage lot? My opinion is a reverse frontage lot, there's no access on Doria, there's, uh, when we...
There's access from, uh...
Here's Doria, there's no access from Doria, uh, and, and Mr. Klein is right, that the township doesn't wanna vacate roads.
There was, there's access to Doria from Bellevue.
Well, Doria, Doria proceeds easterly.
This is, there's an unpaid portion, I guess that's confusing, this section is unpaid, there is a road Doria that is paid.
Between Bellevue and the Jackson property line of Doria, which is about two hundred fifty... It's a paper road.
So somebody technically could come and finish off that road and buy the lot and build a house.
There, there's a triangular piece, if the township sells that triangular piece to somebody, they could come in and get a house there.
So then halfway on two point eleven, two point twelve, is frontage that eradicated on Doria Avenue?
There's frontage on the paper street, and, and that's the issue that RBB brought up, and I said, if the board determines these are true lots, which we need a variance, I'll give the testimony for why we should get the variance, to have twenty feet instead of thirty feet, if the board determines that it, it's a, uh, it, it's not needed, well then...
Well, cause right now it's not needed because there's no road, but it, it could be a road.
If the township's...
Therefore you need how many feet?
But, 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 but the court of law would explain was, that the corner house is, you can't do anything...
Corner house, no problem.
The second house probably won't be in much of a...
It's two point eleven.
The real question is just two point eleven, would somebody can technically buy this triangle right back in here, and cut the road into here, build a house over here, and have an...
So that we do have to leave two point eleven at frontage to Doria Avenue?
So then the question becomes, if you leave it as frontage, you need to put a sidewalk in on two, on two point eleven, because if we're leaving this as frontage, and we're leaving this as a, a potentially, um, vacated, um, um, road, and he has to put a sidewalk in on Doria Avenue?
Right, right.
On two point eleven. Because right now, it's a, it's a, one second, it's a design, it's for the design waiver, not have to do anything in here, because you'll never fit a Doria Avenue, why'd he say that?
Why'd he say that?
That's what he's saying.
I, I said it because the township owns the lot, and I can't, I imagine they can't, unless the township committee changes to, to, uh, do things that are contrary to the public interest, why they would sell a township lot for somebody to build a house on?
Why, why, why? It's not everything.
It, it, it hasn't gone on, uh, in, in the current administration, because they, they're not trying to encourage a house on a lot that really doesn't fit ones. That would be more appropriate location for a park or some other type of use. Uh, but, I, I have acknowledged that the township committee determines to sell that, uh, all somebody needs is access, so no, there's no reason that Doria Avenue would be improved all the way through to Jackson, because in Jackson, it's industrial, and, and Jackson doesn't wanna connect.
But at least as far as lot two point eleven, it should be left in a way that someone could...
Well, it is left in a way, if, if somebody wants to put in a road there, it's a seventy-five foot right-of-way.
Wait, excuse me.
What's that? But he said he's, someone can technically finish it and get it. So that's why I said about four, he's only questioning two point eleven or two point...
Yeah.
It's the only one they were questioning, but that question is, uh, two point two and two point, um, um, thirteen, is that correct?
If it's finished, that's still aside, isn't it?
No.
Because you can get to two point eleven.
You're not gonna give access for open enough to their property.
We, we, we can put a note on the subdivision plan that there's no access, no, uh, vehicular access, uh, permitted to lot at two point eleven, that's what's done on reverse frontage lots where it is taken.
I can see that, but what we're saying now is what stops someone from buying the township lot, you're saying township never gonna sell it?
Okay.
So let's bypass that, that's what we'll say.
Township does sell it.
What stops someone from finishing Dorian Avenue?
Somebody puts in a road to get to their thing, it's a seventy-five foot right-of-way, so they can put fifty feet of it on their side, and there's twenty-five feet of right-of-way left, so that the, uh, setbacks for these, just like we're talking about over there.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Just like we're talking about over here.
Right.
Why can't you put the septic in the backyard of that house and move the house forward? But then you don't need, then, then, then you have an issue with setbacks. I don't know.
If, if, if we're talking about one lot that it's a problem for the board, we'll, we'll flip the septic in the house, and we'll comply with the thirty feet here, I, I think it's, I think it's...
It's worth it. You, you have, you have a hundred feet anyway with the septic, that's not a problem. You know, we just, we just, we just, we just wanna make sure that, that, that whoever want it, ever going to get that.
But, and, and you have a seventy-five foot right-of-way.
Okay, the main, the main thing that I wanna improve is, and make that lot, which is twenty thousand square feet, into non-useable.
But, and, and it does...
The Doria Avenue lots a long ago.
Yeah, the, the triangle, the triangle a lot certainly is not...
We're not, we're not stopping, by us developing it this way, it doesn't stop if they ever sell that, that lot, like, anyway, if someone puts in that street, up to their street, up to their property, we can still do that. We can still do it. We're not stopping, it doesn't stop, this doesn't stop anywhere.
Okay.
Okay.
We're up to motion, oh, you had a question?
I have a question, this is basically on B nine six six B. Okay, uh, zoning, it says on the number four, um, design waivers will be required for providing curb and sidewalk along with projects in entire road frontage, explain that to me.
Doria Avenue.
That's not Doria Avenue though, this is...
Entire frontage.
Entire frontage.
Five, which?
Well, because we're not doing it across the entire frontage, we're doing it here and here and not here. That's exactly the comment that Mr. Klein was talking about.
That's what you're saying, entire frontage?
That's entire frontage?
Yes.
Road, yeah, project's entire road frontage?
Yes.
The design waiver will be required...
He asked for a waiver from requirement of this, of putting curbs and sidewalks on the entire frontage, we understand he's...
By eliminating Doria Avenue.
Everything except for Doria Road.
Correct.
The ordinance says curbs and sidewalks on the entire frontage. Somebody asked for a waiver from that particular section of the ordinance, but he's gonna put curbs and sidewalks on everything.
Curbs and sidewalks around everything, except for...
No, no, I, I, that's a quirky way to say it, except...
We are, we are, yes, we are putting curbs and sidewalks.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can, Jerry, I have a question for you, so, I mean, the plan is nice, and, and within the, the, the project, that we seem to really, you know, are improving the roads, but the one strip of road that's leading to this project is still extremely undersized, I know, I don't know the...
Which road are you talking about?
Name of the road.
Newport, which...
That's what I opened my comment.
Right, which goes from the intersection of where they're gonna be, um, I would say upgrading roadway until Cross Street, so the main order, even moving to the back here, all right, just a second.
The issue is, I, I, I can remember, that section, uh, both of those things.
Mr. Mayor, please say it again, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, tell me, I want your, what's your question, so I'm sorry.
So there is a, I would, I'm gonna call it the artery that goes from Cross Street down, it's, it's Newport Road, and it's, and it's, goes all the way down to the intersection where this project begins.
Yeah.
Okay, that road is still pretty undersized, no lightning, no sidewalks, nothing.
Right.
I like everything that's, that's on this plan, I don't know, and my question to you is, do we have any jurisdiction to ask them to attempt, or can we put language in the resolution that they may have to go back?
They have the lot?
Can, would they be able to go back to the township and, and maybe make an effort to see if something can be done with that road, do we have...
You're talking about the, the other side of Newport on the other side of Bellevue?
Right, that leads to Cross, which brings, which is going to be the artery where all this traffic is gonna be coming in and out of.
Unless there's an off-track assessment requirement, the answer's no.
Jerry, can you read your resolution? Resolution we're writing up here. Um, the objective presented, extra testimony from other candidate, um, Lieutenant, the Espalas. Existing development of Newport Avenue is very narrow, is a very narrow street, approximately eighteen to sixteen, eighteen feet wide. If approved, a roadway will need to be widened in order to accommodate new traffic.
From Cross Street?
A, correct, that's what we're talking about. The residential site improvements actually require both sidewalks, construction of both side, it's not sidewalks, but the existing development of Newport Avenue has a very narrow street, does that mean the whole Newport Avenue? If approved, a roadway will need to be widened in order to accommodate the new traffic, does that mean the whole Newport Avenue?
To mainly support a Newport Avenue that's narrow, right?
Well, that the whole Newport Avenue is narrow.
And we're, we're...
Of course, we're doing that, we're...
I'm sorry, we got four people talking at one time, pardon me?
We are approving a portion that's in front of our properties.
And, and I think when you're reading that, that's Mr. Littorne's testimony.
Correct.
He's an, an objective, it's the board that makes the decision, not the objective.
How do we decide later on, because I remember there was a lot of discussion about finishing Newport Avenue, and I don't see any here.
Mr. Chair, can I just rephrase this question, I think the question is, we're talking about building forty-six homes, no, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, and one's existing already.
So twenty-five, there's gonna be twenty-six.
There're twenty, there're twenty-six lots, one is a basin, and one's...
Twenty-five new houses, approximately fifty cars, maybe a basement, maybe, and you've got a very narrow road coming into Cross Street, all the way to the intersection of Bellevue and...
Gonna be a hundred cars, you got four, four cars.
A lot of traffic, we're talking about adding onto a very narrow piece of route for people. You know, I was there yesterday, and it was, it was, it was not really legal, I was standing on the corner, people coming in from Cross Street, it was very, very narrow.
And, and, and the practical answer is that the school is widening it at Cross Street, and the next property owner...
I'm not talking about Cross Street.
Yeah, you're talking about Newport, from Cross to this property, I, and, and I understand that, and, and the practical answer to that is, the school is gonna widen it at the intersection across their frontage, and the next property owner is Walt Lucas, who's already working on a subdivision, and when he does it, he'll have to widen it.
The school's probably impacted to Newport.
There are two, each corner of, of Newport has, was one school that already did some work, you see curbing, and, uh, curbing has already gone in, and the other corner just got, they just got...
You're talking about the school over there?
There's a school, I think it's one, no, 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 that's, that's a couple of properties down. The one, there are two corner properties are schools, one of them's already done, the curbs is in, and the other one, I think, is Scott, recently, one of the...
They're not gonna do anything for the rest of Newport.
And, and that's where Walt Lucas owns the property, from where there the school stops, up until, uh, this, uh, up until Bellevue. He owns from, from where the school is to Bellevue, uh, and he's working on an application that will go to the planning board, and then he will be putting that much of it.
That's hearsay, I don't know.
With all that being said, we can only do what we can on our portion, and we are improving...
We had a discussion about that, I came back for a hundred percent, I don't have the minutes here, that the whole Newport should be widened to accommodate the extra traffic, that's what, that's what I'm...
Yeah, we're, we're approving all portions of the road that we can.
What?
Yes, we discussed it, but it can't be all they're burdened, everybody who's working, who's working, they're paying for it.
Well, I'm, I'm asking them to pay for it, Jerry, my question to you was, maybe they can have, open a conversation with township engineers or the other property, um, owners, and see if they can, you know, streamline, be able to get that open, you know, as, as...
Well, I think Mr. Flannery, that, that's enforceable, or... Mr. Flannery specified that the school at the other end is gonna widen their portion, and this fellow, Mr. Lucas, when he comes in, is gonna have to widen the rest of it, which brings him down to Bellevue. You can't, in my opinion, require him to widen Newport on the other side of Bellevue.
No, I know I can't require him, I, I was just asking if maybe, like we asked, um, like the previous, you know, applicant, if that's an attempt to get into a conversation with it's worth this.
Yeah, okay, we're up to a motion.
At least on record.
Yes.
That will be attempted, maybe.
Can I have a motion? I think that's for a motion.
Do we have to make two separate motions?
Um...
I couldn't hear that.
Two separate motions, or one motion?
One for A and one for B.
Okay, so can I have a motion for thirty, um...
Just one second, the Newport part of this development is gonna be how wide? We say it's gonna be thirty-two feet.
Thirty-two, thirty-two.
Thirty-two, and, and the Newport part is not, is one of the pieces, how wide? Eighteen.
I think it's twenty.
Twenty? I think it's twenty. How's it gonna work, you, you gonna go drive?
Is it parking in Newport Avenue? No, most of the street is parked.
It'll probably park anywhere.
It, currently with twenty feet, that's why twenty feet is proof, there's no parking, so it's two ten-foot lanes, you get down to here, there's gonna be two ten-foot lanes, and cars that are gonna park on each side.
How wide is Doria Avenue on the other side of Bellevue?
Uh, probably thirty feet, that, that's what was the standard at the time, that was...
And the, that, I mean, paved, right?
Paved thirty feet.
And it's gonna be paved how wide on Bellevue between Newport and Doria?
Well, this would be twenty-eight, there's sixteen on...
Yes.
On his side, twelve on the other.
Twenty, twenty-eight, leaving four feet back to the other side, and, and there's another line of mine that's working on that.
So this developer then will... So this developer then will, will make sure that Bellevue and that area between Newport and Doria is paved to at least twenty-eight feet.
Correct. Twenty-eight feet.
And, and Doria on the east side of Bellevue is already.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
Yeah.
That's where everybody's gonna get out of their portion from.
No, actually, it's a cul-de-sac.
No, go to the cul-de-sac.
Sorry, it's a cul-de-sac.
Yes, there's only one street.
Yeah, yeah, I think I.
All right, sorry about that.
Yeah. Okay, motions?
Motion for which application?
Uh, thirty-six, six, eight.
Thirty-nine?
Newport.
Newport. Thirty-nine, six, six, A, Newport.
Motion for who? I second.
Um, okay, motion for Mayor Gelli, second from Officer Gonzalez. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Virg, yes, not Virg. Mr. Ingraham.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion for thirty-nine, six, six, B.
I'm making a motion for proof.
Motion, Ingraham, motion, second. Second, Mayor Gelli. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Ingraham.
Yeah.
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Halverson.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, thank you, good night, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Um, moving forward.
Are we gonna do forty-six, twenty-fourth Street?
Clover, yeah.
Two-twenty-two South Clover Street, lot five thirty-six, lot one.
What?
Carrie Martin, four, start.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Forty-three, forty, forty-four, forty-four, forty-six, here we have, forty, one-ten, what goes in here?
Uh.
Forty-four, forty-six. Okay, forty-four, forty-six, one-ten, North Flannan.
Can I have a motion for Carrie, forty-four, forty-six, one-ten, North Flannan?
I make a motion.
Motion from Halverson, second. By Shingber, Madam Secretary, roll call, please. Uh, Halverson, I'm Shingber.
It's being carried based upon no notice, but you're agreeing with the way it's planned, and it would create.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Natale. Mr. Ingraham.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Yes, okay, I tell them forty-four, forty-six. I'll tell them forty-four, forty-six, one second, a vote will be heard on twelve-four at this room. Thank you.
No further notice.
I don't need further notice.
Forty-four-seven, let's.
Forty-four-seven. You wanna weigh it out?
No.
It's, 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 it's.
Yes, not.
Not happening. You heard what my guy said. Not happening. Forty-four-seven, can I have a motion for, for, for forty-four-seven?
Motion.
Motion for Mayor Gelli and Shingber, Madam Secretary.
December fourth.
Yes.
No further notice. We agreed to waive time?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
And Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Ingraham.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anyone that's here for the number forty-four, second, will be heard on twelve-four. Thank you, good night.
Forty-four, Clover Street property is two-twenty-two South Clover Street, lot five thirty-six, lot one thirty-three, and lot thirty-seven on the forty zone to create six units and three duplex buildings. On ten year phone engineer plan, August twenty-four, twenty-seventeen, the applicant is requesting use in both variants we lead to construct three duplexes on six zero lock line lots. Both variants we reach is required for the proposed lots and dwellings, including lot area, lot width, and side yard setback. One existing single-family dwelling, two beds, and improvements on the property on.
Chairman members of the board, Michael J. Gross, Chair Dan Allen Sisla, representing the applicant, I have Mr. Joe Kishuba, who's a licensed professional engineer and plan of the state of New Jersey, as my expert witness. I think he has been qualified previously by the board.
Yeah, we do. You should raise your right hand if you swear, or affirm to tell the whole truth, so help yourself.
I do, thank you very much. Joseph Kishuba, KBA Engineering Services, minus one degree.
Can you describe the location of this project using the aerial?
Uh, certainly. Uh, I wanna mark some exhibits.
Sure.
Uh, I have a colored aerial of the property, uh, showing the property by itself.
A one.
A one. Uh, I have an enlarged colored aerial, uh, showing the property and surrounding areas. A two. And I have a copy of the, uh, portion of the zonemap, A three. Referring to A two, this property is, uh, on Clover, uh, immediately, uh, south of Matitacamp, uh, adjacent to, uh, there's a project recently approved directly adjacent to this, a triplex approved on this lot here, existing apartments. Uh, and this is the Lakewood Housing Authority project, uh, so there's a, a number of multifamily uses in the area. Uh, there's no CUA sewer easement that traverses the property, uh, through this area on the northern side. Uh, we are south of Matitacamp, uh, the surrounding area. This is the only single-family lot in the R, section of the R forty zone. Specifically, if I, uh, bring your attention, the R forty, the property question is up here. This entire section of the R forty, we're the only single-family lot. Uh, the other properties in the area are apartments, the triplex that was approved, um, Washington Square Apartments are over here. Uh, the shops at Washington Square, and, uh, Dean's Living Quarters, uh, commercial. So there are no single-family uses in this zone other than this lot. Therefore, it's my professional opinion that this, uh, uh, this project is uniquely suited to this lot. We're proposing construct six duplex units and three buildings, um, on one point five seven acres. Uh, that's three point eight one units per acre. Uh, specifically, the townhouse project approved, uh, immediately adjacent to this had a density of nine point eight acres. The apartments, uh.
Nine point eight units.
Or nine point eight units per acre. Uh, twenty-five apartments, uh, to the south of there had a density of twelve point five units per acre. Lakewood Housing Authority is about eight point seven. Uh, again, we are only three point eight, uh, units per acre. Uh, the footprints are approximately fifteen hundred square feet. We've designed the driveways to conform with the county requirements. I think we'll have a K-turn at the front, uh, for safety, so no one has to back out onto the county road.
Clover is a county road, correct?
Clover is a county road, that's correct. Uh, we are proposing refuse enclosures in front of each of the units, uh, the size, I should say. Water and sewer does exist in Clover. Sewer does need to be extended. Uh, right now, the OCUA easement is here. Sewer needs to be extended, uh, north to services. Sewer also needs to be extended north to service the project you have recently approved as well. Uh, it's not a major development, uh, does not disturb greater than one acre, does not add greater than a quarter acre of impervious. Uh, the rear yards are all drained, the wetlands, the overland flow, we're the lowest property, uh, so everything flows towards the stream.
Any runoff to the neighborhood?
No runoff by the neighboring properties. Uh, we do require a wetland fill permit for this project, which we've obtained. Uh, for, uh, a portion of it, we're in the process of obtaining the remainder as we speak. We're proposing street trees in all the frontage. We're not proposing, uh, foundation plantings at the front in order to allow us to have the larger driveways, uh, to account, accommodate the county requirements. Uh, there is existing street lighting here, utility pole here.
To the south and north.
To the south and north, we both already have, uh, overhead lights. Our parking will comply with the ordinance. We're proposing four parking stalls per unit. The bumpers aren't required because we are surrounded by other multifamily uses, so are no bumpers required. The trash, NHPC, it could be in the side yards. We are proposing ten-foot side yard setback, sufficient room for those, as well as, uh, space around them. Height will comply with the ordinance, and we are proposing it itself. So the variances will require, or density, uh, as I indicated, a lot area. We are in R forty zone. Forty thousand square feet for single families. These lots are exceptionally large for duplexes. Uh, the smallest lot is fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty square feet. Uh, the north lot is twenty thousand, four hundred and thirty-six. The south lot is thirty-two thousand, three hundred and one. Very large for duplexes. Uh, the lot widths are seventy-six feet wide, uh, at the middle units, which is the smallest. The other two are greater than a hundred and fifty feet wide.
I believe there's an engineering report dated August twenty-four, two thousand seventeen, from every convert. Are you aware of that report?
Yes, I am.
Do you have any, uh, questions or comments, expect any items in that?
I work, can you, some.
Yes, uh, do I have any questions or comments regarding the RVE report? Uh, I do not have any specific questions or comments regarding that report. Uh, we are seeking the waivers that are being requested. Uh, the, one of the items does indicate that there's wetlands present on the property. Again, we do have approval from DEP. We are working with DEP, uh, the remainder of the approvals we need, uh, so we acknowledge that. Uh, as far as review comments, I do not have any specific, uh, questions, uh, regarding any of the, uh, requirements noted.
And you're, you definitely agree with all the comments?
We do.
Make all the changes?
Yes.
Is there going to be a homeowners association, I believe? That was one of the questions in the review letter.
I, I don't believe there will be. Uh, there is no, uh, stormwater system, uh, required because it is not a major development, uh, and it's an existing roadway, so.
Is there any stormwater being dumped on to Clover?
Uh, there will be, the driveways will drain towards Clover, and the buildings will be drained into dry wells, which will eventually go towards the river.
And can you, uh, please, uh, address the justification for both the use and the both variances?
Uh, certainly. Uh, so we can, uh, we can seek the use variance, uh, in that the site is particularly suitable, uh, which can be a special reason where, uh, a need is felt, uh, a need is provided in the community, and that the site is particularly suited to this, uh, type of, uh, development. Um, the nineteen ninety-nine master plan identifies to maintain and encourage diversity in the type of character of available housing prompting up opportunity for varying residential communities, and also identifies providing housing opportunities for all groups, family size, and income levels. And the two thousand twelve master plan reexamination report identifies the need to provide housing and services for latent growing population.
Does the two thousand seventeen report contain similar language?
It does, yes. Uh, and where the property itself is particularly well fitted, again, this is a substantially oversized lot for six units. Uh, substantially less, uh, uh, density than exists surrounding this property. There are no other single-family uses in this section of the R forty zone.
What's going on on the other side of Clover Street?
The other side is, uh, public open spaces. It will not be built.
Okay.
And most of wetlands. Uh, access to a county road, access to utilities, and in my notes, there's no development across the street. Uh, the site.
The, the back of the, of each one of these, uh, is usable, the backyard?
The backyards are usable for approximately, uh, twenty-five feet, and then that's the end of the wetland fill.
Basically, all the extra area that they have, you know, this large, huge, useless.
Correct. It's, uh, part of it is wet, uh, but the remainder of it is just wooded, so it's just me, part of their yard. Okay.
On the rear, are you showing decks or patios?
Uh, we are showing decks. And we comply with the rear yard setback. The, uh, the development complies with the, the setback requirements for a, a similar R ten. In fact, we are substantially larger than is required for, for an R ten. Uh, we're over the twelve thousand square feet substantially. Uh, we meet the ten-foot setback, uh, side setback requirements, and are actually in excess of that. Again, we have the benefit of this easement here, so we have a very large setback on this side. Uh, we have a large.
It's the north side.
On the north side. The south side, uh, we have a large setback against the existing apartments. We're very well spaced on this. We're, we're, uh, larger than most duplex development.
Any other, uh, reasons for the variances?
Uh, yes. Uh, we also promote the establishment of appropriate population densities. Again, density here is much less than those in neighboring developments.
That's, under that, in the municipal land use law, is that correct?
Under municipal land use law, the, uh, purposes of the act, purpose E, as well as purpose G, provides sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of uses. Uh, additional relief is required, and it can be granted under the C two criteria. Uh, again, we conform with the R ten, uh, requirements for more than twelve thousand square foot lots. The middle two lots are over fifteen thousand, the other is greater than twenty, uh, plus. Uh, the dimensional leap is simply the result of being the R forty, uh, zone, which, again, this is not, uh, uh, the appropriate use of this is, is not R forty. There are no R forty developments here. Um, and the bulk variance leap, again, can be granted under the C two criteria, and that the benefits outweigh the detriments to public good.
How about the negative criteria?
Uh, the possible sub, uh, substantial detriments to public good, uh, reduction in airlight and open space. Again, we have ample setbacks, more than most development or duplex developments provide. We're a low-traffic generator with access to a collector road. We, uh, uh, noise, uh, residential using density permitted. Again, there's substantially more intense, uh, multifamily development immediately toward south and immediately south of that, so we're, uh, very typical to the area. Uh, the zone plan calls for residential and seeks properly spaced development, uh, so we do not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan on zoning ordinance.
I believe the engineering report asks for the status of other regulatory applications.
Uh, correct. Uh, we have Ocean County Planning Board submission that is pending. Ocean County Soil Conservation District is pending, and final DEP wetlands approval is pending. We do have an initial approval.
Mr. Kobi, is, where is the HVA C U units going to be? That was in your report.
In the side yard. We have ten-foot setbacks on this, so we have ample room to provide those, as well as walkways around.
And is there going to be an independent patient, living basement?
Uh, it will be, uh, we do intend to have basements. Uh, it may have, uh, independent access. Uh, again, we do provide four parking stalls per unit, which accounts for.
Where's the, where's the, uh, if you're gonna have independent basements, where's the steps?
It would be in the front.
In the front.
And there's no other steps going down to the basement, only internally from the center of the house?
That's what we show in the architectural, correct.
Yeah. There's no other side doors. And the side.
The, the architectural shows steps up to the front, uh, as well as steps in from the side.
Yeah, sure. Um, oh, um, Shingber.
I had a question. So these architectials must have been like, uh, that you submitted, must have been like a cotton paste, because they don't match up with the footprint of the home that you have on the plan that you submitted.
They match up with one of the footprints. There's two different sizes, so I'm.
On, on, on the foot, on the, the engineering plans, it doesn't show access to basement. It only shows a small little porch in the front of the home.
Correct.
Architectials show a full, uh, porch in the front with, um, with the steps of the basement going underneath it, which is not, so it just, so now I'm not sure which one is, is current. The reason why I'm asking is that, it's very important to me to know where the access to the basement is. There is, we're having an issue where any duplex over twenty-eight, twenty-nine feet, some people are putting two basements into it, and, and this is thirty-two feet. So we will, we not, you know, wanna.
He's the guy.
He's.
We will stipulate that we will have one single access to the basement in the front.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just.
Yes.
As far as the department is concerned, I see you have like a, a, a way to back out instead of backing out on Clover Street?
Correct. We have the, the standard county veto, which you'll see at the, built at the corner of Clover and Route eighty-eight. Um, and, and she, anything on Route eighty-eight has been built this way as well, and we have the ability for a K-turn area in the front.
So we're not backing out?
We're not backing out, correct.
And in between the two steps apart, you don't have a garage or a, or.
Correct, correct. The county will require them to have fifty-foot distance, uh, between driveways.
But you're not gonna have any foundation plantings on the front, is that what you said?
That's what he testified, yes.
Correct. It's gonna be difficult to provide that with the parking, as well as the basement access and that. Uh, if, uh, if necessary, we can certainly provide a foundation planting between the two stairways, but it's a limited area.
No, that's the front bushes.
Mr. Gelli, my, my comment is that that K-turn where technically it should, it should supply a K-turn to be able to come back, because that is the street.
It's a busy.
It's very busy at the beginning.
Yes.
Um, because being on the parking, will probably end up being on a parking spot.
I'll be probably.
I hope not. I hope not, but.
What a sign, do not park here.
Yeah.
If you're gonna have.
Violators will be punished.
Yes.
But I just.
Oh, we totally in order of expense.
Well, what I, what I do wanna mention is that we approved, you know, the, the, the triplex there, which, uh, I'm not, I'm not so whatever about that approval, but they actually were, they had to come back to us because the county didn't want that whole part of it.
Right.
Correct. Obviously, the engineer designed that, and the concern that they have is because we have multiple driveways with less than fifty-foot spacing.
Right.
That was the particular requirement we couldn't meet. This, we have the fifty-foot spacing, so we comply with it.
And, and the county will make you, uh, will, is okay with this?
The county will be okay with this, yeah.
You sure?
That's, that's.
Okay.
We meet their requirement. I, I should say, we meet their requirements. The county opened, the county, but we meet their requirements.
It's a complicated one.
Okay. Does anyone have any further comments? If that will open to the public, please step up. Anyone in the public wanna be heard on the number forty, forty, Clover Street Properties LLC, please step up.
Mr. Klein, would you raise your right hand? You affirmed to tell the whole truth, so I hope you got.
Affirmed.
Um, question, the, the, the people backing out over here will have an easement to be able to use the K-turn on the other side, like, or they, you could block it off, that they could only use their side. That means is the county wants it to be used as one access. That means is the county wants it to be used as one access for both houses, and they divide themselves in the air, or it's two separate accesses?
We'd have no objection to access either.
No, no, that's not what I'm asking. Okay, I'll tell you what I'm trying to bring out. This came up to the zoning board in the past, and there was concern that once you have two units, and they both use the frontage, and they could use one with each other, like over here, they have access, that means is you have the side, the county is concerned about the safety of their roads.
Correct.
So they don't want people backing out.
Of course.
Rightfully so, Lakewood should do that too, I don't know why Lakewood, the county is more concerned about vehicle safety than Lakewood, but that's a whole different question, let's not deal with Lakewood. But the question that I have is, in the past, when this happens, happened, the board made them put like a sidewalk over here in the front of the houses, like this, the, the kids have like, you could walk till the sidewalk, and you don't have to use this whole busy parking lot between the two units. Because this person that is backing the house will be concerned about his kids, and if he drives over them, that's his problem. But the person over here, you know, it's, that, that, the question is if the applicant is able or willing to put in a sidewalk over here in front of the units, plus the sidewalk, just for the safety of the kids. I'm not talking about density or anything like that, this is a safety issue. The reason why I'm bringing them up, I live in a similar type of situation, and it's very dangerous. So I know from experience that it's, even though nobody was killed yet on my block, is because I'm careful. Do you have any own kids? I don't have so many.
The question would be whether the board, uh, requires something like that, that the, the trade-off would be, we have the room to do it, we can push the K-turn a little closer to the roadway, but it's gonna then, uh, these K-turn areas are gonna impede upon the six-foot shade tree area, uh, so we're gonna have a little less grass area in the front.
But safety vice, um...
I don't disagree that safety is a concern, we could certainly push these forward and provide a four-foot walkway across the park.
There's no four-foot walkway right now in front?
There's a sidewalk across the entire frontage, we're providing a sidewalk. He, what he's identifying is a sidewalk directly in front of the units.
There is a sidewalk in front of the units. What's the spot right over here?
Well, it's gonna be sidewalk and curbs along your part of Clover.
On Clover, we're providing sidewalk and curb.
Right in front of the units.
The only, the only reason why I'm mentioning this is, is because they have a shared driveway. If they wouldn't have had a shared driveway, they would have backed out everybody from their own unit, you know, you tell your kid, we'll fill the sidewalk on my driveway, and he's concerned about his kid when I back him.
I understand where you want to put a sidewalk, I'm trying to figure that out.
He's saying between the house and the driveway. He wants a sidewalk.
Like a smaller, you can shut the...
He's saying here, between the unit and the driveway, a sidewalk across here.
Correct. But that's not with the doors, the door's on the side, so when you're coming out from the side, that yellow spot is the door, no one's going back to the door, no one's going back to the house to play. You're coming down the door, you're ready to...
Unless if he turns the door, the, the steps sideways.
So then...
It's not so nice, but it's a safety concern.
You know, that's, that, to me, this, to me, to me, the, the driveway looks like it's almost bled up to the house. We're gonna put a sidewalk right on that, that's all the house.
It's approximately three feet off.
So...
What he's saying is you move this up like over here till over here, like this, the road, the side, this, the, the, the pavement of the driveway starts like over here, like this, he could put it...
You're lowering, you're lowering everything down, but you're moving on it.
And he's losing these type of bushes over here in the front of...
The trees would still be there, we're losing...
So you're walking on, on concrete instead of blacktop, I mean, what's the...
It just, when you tell the kid, you can't walk past the sidewalk, if you have a barrier, if you don't have that, the steps goes right away down on the regular pavement, and they, that, I know you don't live on such a block, I did live on such a block, and I know what I'm talking about.
My question is if it's, if, because I see right now that the, that the blacktop is going to the, to the, to the, to the house. So what you're saying is move the blacktop down, maybe move with the sidewalk, but it doesn't mean that the car won't drive right all the way over the sidewalk. What he's pulling up.
People could technically do, but drive into the house too.
I don't know what's more dangerous, to keep figuring out the difference between a sidewalk or blacktop, or shortening a very well-measured driveway, because as it is backing up there, it's, it's, I think, horrific.
He's not shortening anything, he's just pulling this up a little bit more, and this, what's happening, it will be a sidewalk, if somebody wants to drive over their sidewalk and block it, it's their decision.
Yeah, but what my, my point is, I hear what you're saying about sidewalk, the safety issue, my point is, this, no, no, my point is that, if it's, it's not losing the sidewalk, that was I don't want it, because it's already past the steps when you're going up and down to the house. It's, it's, it's like, it's like here's these, start some of these steps coming in here, and you want to put the sidewalk up here, the kid's coming out of the house, he's already past the sidewalk. Or you can't go past the sidewalk, well, I should make sure the kid...
I'm giving an example, I'm just giving an example.
You'll understand.
I'm living such a fleet, so I know what I'm talking about. You have cars parked now over here, somebody parked this car over here, the kid comes down of the steps, where does he go? Like around, pick up.
Okay.
If you have a sidewalk, he comes down the steps.
So, so, and now I have a question to you, now I have a question to you, is there enough room to put the blacktop in the beginning of the steps so that the kid's gonna, I don't think so, because that means you have to drop the man ten feet, is there ten feet to come all the way to that?
I assume that if he puts the steps sideways, he could do it. If he puts it like right over here, he comes down more, and it doesn't look so nice.
I'm looking at it from the way it is right now, but if it's set still sideways, right, he still has to drop the whole thing down five, an extra five feet.
Correct, it's gonna have a substantial impact.
It's gonna have a very substantial impact, and it's also not gonna help because now I'm down, and I'm right in front of the blacktop on a, on a, on a two-foot, three-foot sidewalk strip, it's not going to... It's like, it's living in chase with a kid, you have to go faster.
That is because he's putting a, a, um, porch over in the front, if he would have moved that in, like, he's coming out of the house like everybody else has.
I, I...
I, I, I'm just talking about safety, it...
I, I, I'm agreeing with you, talking about safety, but I want to see work with the other safeties at the other end of the driveway. You have to think about safety on both sides.
Because he wants to make something bigger and make it nicer and look very good.
Forget about nicer.
And if I give it a thousand percent, I should make a lot of money.
What a time.
Nice has nothing to do with safety, forget about nicer, okay? Uh, we tried to accomplish the K-turn operating coming out as well, and, 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 and in order to put a sidewalk there, um, again, I'm for it, I hear what you're saying, but I can't see it work, because then you're compromising the safety on Clover Avenue.
Uh, uh, unless if he turns around the steps.
Even if he turns around the step, that means that you're taking six feet out from the front of the building.
If he comes down over here, and the steps goes down over here, what is the problem?
No, he has to take a whole porch and make the steps go up to the house this way.
This step, this porch, he makes a step like this going down over here.
Yeah, he has to make it this way, instead of this way, he has to make it this way.
Yeah, like coming down over here, this guy's coming down over here.
We have, we have a statement he wants.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Anyone else in the public? Seeing none, um, we're closing to the public, um, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Uh, motion for Oliver Gonzalez, can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Al Nafthali, Madam Secretary, roll call please. With all the conditions, don't forget, yeah, with all the conditions.
Well, except for foundation plan, you're not gonna...
Yeah, except for foundation plan, correct.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Nafthali?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
No.
No. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes. Good night and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a good night. Can I, um, motion to table?
Wait, wait, we have four resolutions.
We have four resolutions, did everyone read the resolutions, are all in favor?
No, no, wait, wait, one of them, nine thousand one. I'm gonna, I'm sleeping. Okay, forty-fourty-one.
Forty-fourty-one.
It does not compute the condition to be approval to show the board.
So we're not memorialized, we're fine.
It needs to be memorialized.
So, leave it out.
I'm just telling you, forty-fourty-one doesn't get memorialized, they need to, like, they're men.
Okay.
Okay, and so, good?
Okay.
Okay.
A roll of favor, forty-fourty-two, forty-fourty-three, and forty-thirty-nine.
Yes.
Yes, all favor? All right.
Say bill.
Motion to table?
Yes.
Yes, and motion to go home?
Yes.
Yes, motion to be closed, good night.
Next meeting, December fourth.
December, December, thank you.